Okay, Susan, I'm all set. If you want to start the meeting whenever you're ready.
Okay, Nick. I see Rick is here. Is Mike Hernandez here? Okay, alright, so we'll call this workshop to order Tuesday, March 23, 2021. And this is our budget workshop through Zoom A link. And I am going to start the departmental budget workshop with the Board of Education. So I don't know whether Sharon wants to speak first or Superintendent Charles Britton. Sharon, what's your pleasure?
Good evening. Dr. Britton's going to be making a presentation on behalf of the Board.
Thank you very much. Good evening. How are you, Charles?
Good. How are you guys? Nice to see you all.
Can everybody hear Charles okay?
I can. Good evening.
All right, Nick, can you unmute Stephanie just in case there may be some questions that I can answer? Or I could pivot to her. I think I got my arms wrapped around this, but it'd be nice to have her unmuted as well.
Yeah, I think anyone can unmute for this meeting.
Oh, great. Stephanie, are you on? There she is. Great.
Hi.
Good. Okay, and Nick, I shared with you a PowerPoint that I think will just help ease the presentation a little bit. Would you be able to show that or do you want me to?
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now. Just give me one moment.
Excellent. Alright, thank you. Alright, there we go. Good, thank you. Alright, so what Stephanie and I would like to do is we'd like to take you through each of the line items associated with the budget. Give you a sense of where our increases and decreases are. And then, of course, why don't we just sort of pause at the end of each of these sections and see if there are any questions? Anyone or several of the items. So Nick, why don't you flick to the next slide or switch to the next slide, please? So the first budget set of line items that Stephanie and I want to review with you are all of those expenses associated with salaries for the district. And clearly, this is the largest, you know, single component of the budget. I mentioned this to you last time to give you an overview. And certainly, we can go into as much detail as you like and be happy to answer any questions. So this year, we have 148.33 full-time equivalent certified faculty in the district. The budget maintains that number for next year. So generally, we're not asking for any new positions in next year's budget. We do, however, have to make some modifications within the budget that are fiscally prudent and bring some positions that were brought into the district after the budget was adopted last year. And we have to sort of account for those at this time. So there is a overall 2.65% increase in the certified line item count that is just due to year-to-year contractual-based general wage increase. Also, some other things that we're doing within the certified faculty is we do have the need for additional sections of health at the high school. This is a new state graduation requirement. Students have to take health now in their freshman year of high school and again in their junior year. So we're not asking for any new FTE increases in order to cover those sections. What we're going to do is we're going to assign those responsibilities to our athletic director and then reassign the athletic director from the administrators bargaining unit to the teachers bargaining unit. In addition, we have three positions. We have two clinicians, a clinician in our Reeler program and a clinician in our Bridges program. And then we have a board-certified behavioral analysis who works district-wide that certainly focuses on our two in-house support programs. This year, those positions are budgeted in our IDEA or open choice grants. We're bringing those out of the IDEA grant and into the LEA budget. And we're doing that because we can't all of these individuals are able to charge Medicare. If they're paid for out of one federal grant program, which is IDEA, they can't charge Medicare, which is another federal program. So we're going to bring them out of the IDEA grant into the LEA. And then we're gonna, you'll see on the next slide when we talk a little bit about non-certified faculty, how we are going to charge the IDEA grant to cover different positions. So this is mostly just a wash, one set of positions for another. And again, it brings us into compliance with the federal grant programs. In addition, the 1.0 full-time equivalent special education teacher and the 0.5 full-time equivalent social studies teacher, those are the two positions that were added after the referendum was passed last year. So they came in outside of the budget. Now we're bringing them into the budget. We have to sort of account for them formally. And then, of course, to sort of make up some of the difference, we are going to be eliminating two classroom teaching positions in the district. And again, that offsets those two positions that we added with the special education teacher and the social studies teacher. And again, year-to-year, we are adding any new FTE. We're keeping it the same. We're largely just reaccounting for some of where we're charging those positions and changing the athletic director's responsibilities so that he can take out a T G. So let me stop and I'll ask if there are any questions related to our certified faculty.
We're getting a little bit of feedback. So if you're not speaking, would you kindly mute?
Yeah, Susan, I just made it so no one can speak now. We should have that fixed.
I was gonna say, Nick, you can probably pick up where that's coming from.
I'm realizing that when I joined back, I don't have host. So I'm unable to give you guys co-hosts. Hold on. I think Tom, you have host. One second, I'm sorry.
Are we back?
Yeah, you should be outside.
Stephanie, give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. I can only see you on the side. I'm like, I've got you. Okay. All right, Nick, why don't you jump to the next slide then, please? So one of the next primary drivers in our salaries line item is associated with non-certified staff in the district. So this year, we have 80 full-time equivalent non-certified faculty. And we are making some adjustments in this count. And again, you'll see that overall there's a decrease in this area, which is associated with how we're reclassifying and using some of our IDEA grant funds. Again, because some of our individuals in district are able to bill Medicare. And it sort of allows them to do that without coming out of compliance with those grant requirements. So there is a year-to-year contractually based general wage increase of 2.52%. You see that on the top line there. We're offsetting this increase by making some adjustments in the non-certified line items. Specifically, we're going to eliminate three paraprofessional positions. We had a retirement in our administrative assistant pool, so we're going to leave that position vacant. We are eliminating a program called early career-based education at the high school. And then we're going to reallocate three of our paraprofessional positions to the IDEA grant. Again, that opened up because we're going to bring the clinicians at our BCBA into the LEA grant. So overall, we're realizing a $99,000 or so, $99,667 reduction in the non-certified salary line items. Nick, why don't you go to the next slide? I'll finish up with all of the salary line items and then we'll see if there are any questions. In addition, what rounds out all of our salaries, we do have a 1% contractual-based increase that we pay for our coaching salaries. We are recognizing a 7.18% increase in our extracurricular salaries. And this is associated with several new positions that we're bringing onboard. We've brought, we've created two new equity coordinator positions. And then we now have building-based SRBI coordinators. And they help us designing interventions for programs who needed, students who need additional support. So those additional stipended positions have increased the extracurricular salary line items by that 7.18%. Our temporary salaries, we're flat funding that. And that's used to offset summer work that we get from custodians and interns. And Nick used to be in this category and clearly did a great job with him. So we're going to flat fund that so we can keep those positions in place, but we're certainly not adding any. Our tutoring salaries, we saw a decrease in that because we did get an additional grant associated with supporting our open choice program students. So we're able to reduce the salaries for our tutors by $10,000, which is a 40% decrease. And we're expecting that we're going to flat fund our overtime salaries. Again, that's always a moving target, but Stephanie and I are comfortable based on past three years' projections that, you know, we can live within the flat-funded overtime salaries expenditure. So that's it for the first set of items that I want to review with you, which are the salaries. Let me stop and ask, are there any questions with respect to what we're budgeting for our certified and non-certified faculty and staff for next year?
I'm gonna work on muting everybody. I'm sorry. Tom, do you think you could click on participants and find me, who's the co-host, and right-click and give me host? Just because my, since you're using the same account as me, when I left and joined back on my computer, you ended up getting host, so I can't allow people to speak from need to. But I'm just gonna try and mute the selectmen right now.
Looks like it's working.
Yeah, so Tom, is Tom?
Tom is in the conference room on the first floor.
Oh, he left. Okay, that's perfect. That's an out-of-host. So if he joins back, or no, I think he gave me host. Okay. So we should be all set. If you need co-host permissions or you need to speak, just type in the chat and I'll give it to you.
We will need to have Tom Robinson unmuted as well as Mike Pelton and Ralph. And looking for Mike Hernandez. There he is. Yep, he should be unmuted as well.
Is Jim Tripp unmuted?
I am.
Yes. Mike now is. Rick Shar?
Okay. Okay.
And Julio Hernandez. Okay. Are there any questions from the selectmen? If there are not, we will continue, Charles. I don't see any questions.
All right, Nick, why don't you go to the next slide, please? All right, so of course, the second largest expense in pretty much any budget, but certainly of salaries and so our benefit overall increase year-to-year is an 8.24% increase. And again, I have to give a shout out to Susan. She was a heck of a negotiator with our insurance vendor this year. And it was certainly higher when we started, but after much conversation, it was reduced. So within that 3.24% increase, we are realizing a 10.4% increase of that $281,000 line. That's because we have 10 more employees this year who are accessing benefits than our years past. So you see the increase there of that 281. The rest of the increase is associated with all of the things that I have below, the life insurance, disability, tuition reimbursement, social security, pension, retirements, workers' compensation. And all of those, we have very little control over. Most of those are either set for us by agencies and vendors that we work for, including if it's social security and others, government agencies, or they're determined by contracts. So we're going to see an increase or anticipating an increase next year associated with the 10 additional employees who are going to access the benefits. And then the $40,000, which makes up the rest, is associated with all of those other items that we account for in the benefits packages. So do we have any questions associated with line items with 200, which are the benefits that we offer?
I have a question, Charles. This is Rick. So you have 10 new medical participants. Were they existing employees that are now opting to take the medical insurance? Or where did they come from, I guess?
Oh, wait, Stephanie, do you know the drug counselor?
Yeah, it's a mix. And as people left last year, I mean, this budget that we're currently in now was done last December or last October. So as people leave and new people come in, those people that left may not have had insurance and the new people opted in, you know, the younger people coming in the district. So usually, it's a mix between that and people that decide to change, whether they get married, have a baby, so the amount gets increased. So it's a mixture of everything. And that's as of when I did it in December. You know, if anybody else came on since then, it's always a moving, you know, a moving target.
Okay, but there were no, there's no total net new employees. These then are employees that have subsequently opted in. Okay.
Correct. Either we lost, either people retired.
Okay, and then you replaced a retiree. But the way I'm understanding it is there were no new positions. So I'm asking myself, well, then why is there 10 more people on insurance? But you're saying these people probably were already in the system or somebody came on and replaced somebody that had left. So the net effect is they're not, you don't have additional employees. You're just replacing employees.
Right, but some of them may not have taken insurance. I compared the list from last year to the list this year. And there was physically 10 new names on the list compared to what was there last year in December of 19. Because we base it off of the December listing.
And there are lots of reasons, Joe. Some people have different life circumstances, maybe marriages dissolve and people, you know, have different reasons for taking the benefits now and not taking them in years past. Or new employees who replaced people who didn't take the benefits. But yeah, your point is well taken. There are no new employees, but there are no new positions. But within the group, there are people that have now chosen to access the packages for medical.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the selectmen? I think we can move on, Charles.
Yes, please. All right, Nick, next slide, please. So in our, we call them our 300 lines. These are all of the professional services that we access in the district. So we have two services that help us negotiate. Well, one that helps us negotiate contracts. And then, you know, we access our legal services through shipment and goodwin. We're going to flat fund those next year. Again, that's a moving target. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit more about why I'm a little bit antsy about flat funding that based on the number of negotiations that we're looking at next year. But I'll loop back to that in the other items section at the end of the PowerPoint here. But heading into this year, we're looking to flat fund legal services and negotiations. Slight increase, $500 increase in the audits that need to be performed every year. And the firm that's contracted with the district has an increase in their contract. Purchase services here, again, we are seeing an increase here. Some of these are COVID-related, but a lot of these are purchase services that we use, particularly with our, within our special education department. You know, we contract all kinds of different employees and vendors to support our students. So we're seeing an overall increase of 4.07 in our purchase line item, purchase services line item. And then professional development to sort of offset some of these increases, we're going to decrease our professional development by $1,600 or 4.88%. And we're able to do that now because we do have access to some additional grants. And we've actually done a really good job writing grants this year and have been awarded some additional ones. So we're able to bring the professional development for our faculty down a little bit. So overall, 3.54% increase in the professional services line items. Any questions there?
I have a question. This is Ralph. With regards to professional development, have, so you've done in a quick check to say what you think would be the professional development you're going to need in the new year, given the fact that so many things change or have changed. You feel comfortable that professional development that you're planning for covers the areas you think that may be new to require some sort of element on the part of the teachers?
I do. We spend quite a bit of time working with our curriculum specialists and our teachers and our principal and identifying our professional development for the year to come. Certainly, within our professional development next year, we're going to focus like crazy on continuing to support our students in the area of social and emotional learning. We're also going to continue to focus and have a relationship with our partners through Teachers College that support our literacy. We're upgrading and supporting our science teachers and our social studies teachers as we adopt new standards. So I'm confident that professional development is supported within the LEA budget and then supplemented with some grants that we've done, some work writing and identifying services for.
This is Lou speaking, Charles. My question was on the purchase services. Is it possible that some of the federal money could maybe cover some of that COVID-related services?
Yes, it has for sure this year. You know, what's interesting, I'm really glad you asked that question. We, I've made a big assumption here. We've built this budget, assuming that next fall, we return to a semblance of normalcy, right? So I am very much aware that if the pandemic is continuing and we still have to run our PB LA and do all of the things that we had to do this year that blew enormous holes in our budget, that we had to work very hard to fill with a budget freeze. And we're very grateful for federal funds to help us pay for that. If we are, continue to be in the pandemic next year, certainly, we would be looking to those federal funds to offset those costs. But I'm glad you asked that question because I do want to be clear that this budget assumes that the pandemic is over the start of the 21, 22 year, which is a big assumption.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Are there more slides, Charles?
Yeah, I got a few more. I think we'll go pretty quick now, I think. So Nick, why don't you advance the slide, please? All right, so 400 section, this will be a quick one. This is the total and we are giving no increase. This is what Carl has to work with to maintain all of our buildings and grounds. So we're not, we're flat funding this amount. This is not any capital improvements. This is literally just to keep the buildings patched together the way they are. I am going to loop back and talk a little bit about this and some of our capital needs towards the end of the PowerPoint here. But heading into next year, we are flat funding our facility services line items. Any questions?
We will follow your presentation, Charles, with the long-range capital. So we'll be able to go into that at that point.
Correct. Thank you.
Actually, Susan, on question for Charles. So that 291,000 is significantly lower than the previous year. If I'm looking at this right, like it was 448,000 in the 2019, 2020 budget?
Let me go take a look here. Stephanie, you have that in front of you? I'm trying to find it.
Yes, when we went into this budget, we cut a large amount from that line item just because we had to do it from somewhere. Thankfully, we went into the pandemic, so we did not have a lot of repairs we needed to do. And Carl has been doing a great job doing what needs to be done. And everything's been, knock on wood, has been running smoothly. And, you know, our largest expense is our HVAC system. Our HVAC system costs us probably $80,000 a year just to keep those up and running and repaired and all the fixes with that. But I mean, when you're kind of given a constraint with what needs to get cut, that's, you know, that's kind of where we went. And it's been okay so far. And we also have, you know, the Fund 11 meetings account where we are able to do some things out of there as well.
Yeah, Rick, I would, I'll point out the 1920 adopted budget was 402,693 for this line item. The 2020, 2021 adopted was this 291,202. So it is a decrease from the 1920, but it is out of the 2021.
And this did come up too. Last year, the question was asked, why was it decreased so significantly? And now we're just kind of keeping it as is for now.
Okay, all right. Yeah, you're right, Charles. I was actually two budgets back, the number I referenced.
And I guess I would have a quick question on that is how is that budget, how is that line item tracking this year? Does it look like you're going to make the budget number for this, that this year or how's that looking?
We're doing okay. Like I said, as Carl's been slowly repairing certain things in the HVAC, it's definitely gotten a lot better on that end for our systems. Now that we're getting into the cooling season though, it could be, you know, when they turn the air conditioners on, it could change. But we're coming in under a little bit in that line item right now. But like I said, we're doing the bare minimum to keep things running, you know, and keeping everybody safe.
Yeah, I think if Carl were here, he would say he definitely needs more. And I think he has some sleepless nights, hoping that things don't break. But so far this year, even with a brutal winter that we've had, our facilities have been okay. You know, we track those numbers pretty carefully and we aren't seeing a deficit in that line item yet. But again, you know, who knows what could happen? This is five aging buildings and things could break at any time, in which case, you know, Stephanie and I would be made aware and then have to figure out how to cover it.
Thank you.
All right, Nick, let's go to the next slide then. So other services, lots covered in here. Seeing a slight increase in our student transportation, this does reflect some of the negotiations in our, we haven't signed any deals yet, but this is what we're looking at. We're thinking, anticipating for student transportation next year. I'll just mention that, well, a little loop back to it. Property insurance, slight increase, 4.1%, $8,000 increase. Telephone advertising, printing, a $400 increase. So both the student transportation and the tuition to LEAs and state private sources, that those two, that LEA in-state and those private sources. Dawn is on the line and certainly, if you had any specific questions, she would answer. But student transportation and that LEA in-state and private sources are very sensitive to the special education-related services that we provide our students. That is always a very moving target. You know, oftentimes, it depends on either students who move into the district, students who move out of the districts, or students who we identify with needs as part of our SRBI process. Dawn is always working very carefully to craft her budget. But you do see these increases here. They're reasonable, but just like we were talking about with our facilities, they're subject to swings with very little notice depending on, again, the needs that our students confront. So what you see here, I think, at a 1.43 overall increase is a conservative place to start. But again, it's one of those areas where you'll see the greatest variability in potential increases or decreases. And then again, our tuition to magnet school, you see, is down. That's one fewer student who is choosing to go to the magnet school and then travel within the district. We're going to kind of flat fund. So overall, I'm guarded. Overall, I'm guardedly optimistic. We're basing these numbers on our conversations with Dawn, understanding of what our current student needs are. But this is an area that always has our attention and Dawn's attention and is subject to great variability.
I have a question, Charles. In terms of the tuition to magnet schools, which has gone down, refresh for me the revenue from Project Open Choice.
Sure. Stephanie, do you have that exact number?
Um, yeah, hold on. So right now with our enrollment that we have, we have 57 students. So we're projected, if it's 57, we'll get $456,000. And which is about 11 students less than what we had last year. So
What is the reduction?
The reduction is the amount of students that were not open choice students who didn't come back to Portland.
Yeah, I know. But how much revenue is that reduced?
Oh, it's $8,000 per student. So 8,000, about $88,000.
That's a sizable reduction in your revenue.
It is.
Because there isn't as much increase in the expenditures, right, Charles?
Correct. We did, we are in, well, we think that 11 of those students that didn't come back is, was a COVID-related decision and other things that influenced that. We are increasing our number of seats next year to account for those 11 and a few more. So that's not going to help next year's budget, will help the year after, but Susan, it absolutely is a significant decrease.
How is that impacting your budget this year?
Right now, we're under, I'm going to have to use from the LEA probably about $9,000, which isn't terrible.
Did you say 19?
9,000.
9, thank you.
And we were able to offset it because we didn't have as many of our students attend pieces and learn and crack and all that. And again, is that because of COVID? It could be. That could change next year. So as that tuition goes, so it kind of worked in our favor this year. But I don't know what next year is going to hold.
Yeah, that's difficult. Thank you.
All right, Nick, want to go to the next slide, please? Okay, so in all of our books and supplies, and again, even though it's called books and supplies, it always surprises me because we often talk about things like diesel and gasoline, which you don't always think of as certainly a book, but it is definitely a supply. So general supplies overall increase, we're looking at 4.84%. Certainly postage, electricity, water and sewer, natural gas, gasoline, diesel, those are always very sensitive to market conditions. Though, you know, we're doing our best to project, but again, we have to hope that those prices fold. So we're being cautiously optimistic there. And then you see some increases and decreases. Again, we offset these, you know, a lot of the reason for the decreases is because this year was a very different kind of year and we didn't use as many workbooks because we were all you know, pretty much everything online. So we were able to offset some of the increases in some of the other areas. But overall, in this section, it came out that we did have a 1.52% decrease. And again, certainly, this is something that we're going to watch closely because the market conditions associated with electricity, water and sewer, natural gas and diesel, those are subject to change. But our hope is that we can hold these lines pretty steady.
I just want to comment a little bit on this. In terms of the Brownstone School, you should see the solar panels installed for next year and the estimate reduction would be about $10,000 is what our consultant has told us. So that's a good thing. And Tom and I are watching these gasoline diesel numbers. They seem to be going in the right direction, but we're still watching and hoping they'll go even lower before we fix. Any comments you want to make on that, Tom? Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Nick. Let's go to the next slide. All right, so buildings and equipment, all of our 700 line items, there are four here. So we do have some instructional and non-instructional related equipment that we're looking to purchase for next year. So you do see, while it says 30.54%, it is, you know, overall $6,500 piece of equipment and that we're looking to get to support some of our programs. You see a big decrease there. I'm sure that's eye catching in terms of the technology hardware, that decrease of 32,000, which is 96% of that line item. That's a reflection of moving the Chrome Books to the capital budget. And again, I can't thank Tom's work on this and his creative thinking about how we do this. But I'm really excited about that. It is so important to us that our students have these devices. And it just makes a lot of sense, the way that Tom is going to structure this expense. And because of that, you see that, that a pretty dramatic drop there in the hardware line item. And then software, you know, we are going to, we are increasing that there. We've identified a piece of reading software called Lexia that's really important for our students and we do want to purchase that software. And the other thing that's happened, I guess this is a part of the silver lining of the pandemic is that our teachers, having been forced entirely online last spring and then for short periods this year, did avail themselves of and get very comfortable with all types of different software that they've been using and want to continue using that software and supporting instructional technology next year, even when the pandemic is, God willing, over. So you see some offsetting increases and decreases in this area. Overall, though, we do realize a 1% decrease in our buildings and equipment supplies. See if there are any questions with respect to buildings and equipment. Okay, hearing none. We have one more. Nick, if you want to take us to the dues and fees. So again, these are expenses associated with all of the professional organizations, CIA, CNES and CS. It's an alphabet soup of professional organizations that our departments and teachers and schools are a part of. We are going to flat fund this line and certainly hope and expect that all of the organizations we work with can continue to hold their prices at a minimum or zero. So we'll get after some of those groups if they try to increase rates and hope that we'll be able to keep everything the same in terms of year-to-year expenses. So any questions on dues and fees?
I don't think so.
Okay, I got two more slides briefly. So capital improvement, I just want to, again, thank Tom, thank Susan for the work you've done with us with respect to helping us bring forward this approach to the Chromebooks and Evolve leasing. I see this as a way to stabilize that supply of Chromebooks for our students. I can't tell you how valuable it was that the district, even before the pandemic, moved in that direction. If that hadn't happened, I don't know what we would have done last March or even this year when the supply lines dried up and my goodness, it would have just been a catastrophe for us. That was really smart, foresighted thinking. And, you know, now that we have had the Chromebooks for five years and have become so dependent on them throughout the course of the pandemic, providing this lease program is going to continue to make sure our students have these devices. And I can guarantee you, if you visited any class anywhere in this district at any time of day, you would see them used all the time. It is a terrific resource for our students and our teachers. So thank you for helping us stabilize that supply. On the other capital item we are including, bringing forward is the $50,000 to remove some in-ground oil tanks that need to come out. Then, of course, I'll just point out two other, I guess I'll describe them as elephants in the room. The track at the high school is in really rough condition. We are keeping it open for the public in the afternoon for walking only. It can't really be run on anymore. It's cracked and it would be too dangerous for somebody to go at a full sprint around it. It is an item that certainly needs attention if we're going to be able to open it back up for our track team to host meets and practice on it. And then I just want to, you know, I'm sure you're all aware, you'll be hearing much more about this in the year to come. We do have a sightlines report that has identified just north of $28 million worth of capital improvements, and that's across all five buildings over the next 10 years. These are, in some cases, items that are overdue, in some cases, items that are right now. And then, of course, they've, sightlines has identified one to three-year projects, four to six-year projects, and six to 10-year projects. So the Board of Education and I have worked and we've sort of taken the position that before we go and say, hey, let's just, you know, request and put together a bonding package or, you know, try to build support for $28 million over 10 years to have all five buildings up and going. It's an important time to sort of stop, take a look at where we are as a district and start asking some questions about grade level configurations, how many buildings we have, and come forward with a plan that reflects a one to five to 10-year proposal for the district to address some of these capital needs. We do have a committee that's working on it. There are Board of Education representatives on that committee. We have town council members and thank you for your service on that. We have members of our community, some parents, teachers, administrator, and we've begun the work over the past few months. Had some rich and exciting conversations so far. We'll certainly continue those into the spring and summer. And I anticipate that next year, you'll start to hear some recommendations coming out of that committee about how we begin to address some of the capital needs in our aging building.
As we are talking, I'm monitoring the chat and there's a question. Is the Gildersleeve Fund still being used to help purchase Chromebooks as in the past?
That's an excellent question. I just had a conversation with one of the Gildersleeve trustees tonight. The Board of Education next week is considering two Gildersleeve grant proposals and I will be developing the additional Gildersleeve grant proposals. Right now, they aren't for the Chromebooks. But certainly, there's no lack of other projects that the Gildersleeve grant could be used to help us with.
Typically, I think they do not fund again. They may look at a program that is an initiation. That's what I'm recalling, Charles. And as opposed to providing the ongoing cost, they would look at a new project or something that's enhancing. Would you, what do you think?
Really interesting. I recently found out that yes, the bylaws of the Gildersleeve grant say that the Gildersleeve grant provides the seed funding, but it can't be anything that the school has to you know, things that are statutorily required to pay for it. And it's something that after they give the seed funding, they would expect the LEA budget to support in years to come. With the exception of technology, right? So the bylaws were changed by the Gildersleeve grant trustees a few years ago and that technology could be a recurring expense. Now, there's still I just asked that question to Howard and some other trustees and I'm still waiting to hear back from them. But what you said is true with one carve-out, which is for technology. And I just recently found out.
For technology? I also know that tomorrow at the Council of Governments, they're going to give us some information about the American Rescue Plan. And I'm not prepared to say I know enough about those funds. I do know there is some thoughts. I've looked at some of the preliminary information. So as we proceed in our workshops next week in particular, I hope that we have a little more information on that so that we can tell our board members what could those dollars be used for. And I would hope that we could have a similar report on the education use.
Absolutely. Yes. Stephanie and I have been working on that regularly now. We're trying to deepen our understanding of it. If those funds may be and the strings that are attached to that.
Right, right, right. And while you can't reduce taxes with that money, you cannot put that money into pension funds. I know that's clearly stated. I would hope that there is some way that we can utilize those dollars to mitigate the increases in our in our expenditures due to the fact that we've seen some reductions in revenues due to COVID and some other areas in our town. And that's really more in general government, Charles, but there may be some areas within the Board of Ed that you've had to address for COVID. And while there's been some help, maybe not totally. So that's something that I look forward to exploring a little more at a later date.
It's an important conversation and it's going to dominate a lot of talking points this spring, I'm sure.
Yes. Any other questions at this point on the capital improvement budget request?
Susan, I don't have a question, but I, just a point of information is that if in fact, we're spending quite a bit for HVAC, Stephanie had said that that account spends a lot and there's a lot needed. Is it possible that some of the American Rescue money that we're getting now could maybe take care of an overage in that account? Because one of the things that COVID requires is that the air quality in the school be as good as it can be. So I'm just, that's just a point of information.
Good point, good point.
Yes, Susan, this is Mike. I just had a quick question for Charles. So the track, I know, is going to be quite expensive to replace it. I think it was a year and a half ago or two years ago, we approved $50,000 to repair it. And obviously, that didn't turn out that well at all. Was going to, I was going to talk to Carl earlier today, but Charles, is there anything that you and and him can do to perhaps look at getting some money back or reimbursement from that expense? I'm sure when they spent, when we spent the $50,000, we didn't anticipate we'd only get a year or two before it was, you know, completely trashed. So I don't know if there's any kind of insurance or liability claim we can make. We could probably use every dollar since I believe the track cost from a line item was 500,000, 600,000. Was that the right, was that approximately the estimated cost?
Yeah, 550,000.
Yeah, so that's not small dollars. So and what's your thought on proceeding or the next step on that? I know we're going to be, I get the joy of coaching the middle school kids with Deb and we're going to be creating kind of a, an alternate track to practice on for the, for the spring season. But what's your thoughts and what do you think the sequence of events will go going forward?
For the track this spring, you mean?
Or just for perhaps a new track and time-wise or whatever. Well, is it realistic that by next year we will have gotten a track made? Or what are the steps that have to be done that we could do to help?
Well, boy.
Wait, Charles.
Small question, right?
Sorry, Carl's asking to be unmuted also. Sorry.
I didn't see him on here. Great.
Carl, Nick, we unmute Carl and you can address the 50,000.
I think Carl was unmuted.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me? Okay, so the provisions that we're making right now is that we have taken an area within the track. I met with Coach Murphy and Coach Ruth yesterday, as well as Nate Strike Cars, our ground supervisor. And we chose an area so that they can do their practicing with hurdles. We are going to make a grass track on the JV soccer field. Not going to say me, the grounds crew is going to set that up. 200-meter track so that they can practice on that. We will have our, we will be able to use the discus area. You will be able to a javelin throw is going to be set up down on the lower field. The shot put is going to be able to be used. The only thing you won't have is an area to anywhere within the track, like to run the 50-yard dash, 100-yard dash and stuff like that. Some of those I think are going to be laid out onto the grass area. So we're making provisions for that. laid out onto the grass area. So we're making provisions for that. But you know, if you were saying you, was one of your questions, if we had the funding for next year, is that what you, did you ask that or no?
Well, well, two questions. I guess, you know, what the next steps would be for funding a new track if that's, if that's what we're looking at. And also, you think Carl, there's any, is there any, you know, having only two years worth of use out of the track after the repairs, are there, is there any recourse that we have from the company that did that?
We never did $50,000 worth of repairs at a track. To my knowledge, not since I've been in the job that I'm in right now, or years before that. We've done like $5,000, maybe 11,000 one year. Last year, we looked at doing this past summer, putting, if I, I don't remember Stephanie, what the number was, maybe five or $10,000 into it.
It was like 11.
11,000, and we made a decision not to do that. The contractors that looked at it basically said this, where do we start? Where do we end? You know, you can get, we could put $11,000 into it and enter the spring live right now of, of 2021 and you know, after a tough winter, have more problems. So we made a decision last summer not to put that money into it.
Okay. Thanks, Carl. Appreciate it.
And the price was 542.
Susan, you're muted.
There's another question in the chat. If possible, could any of the funds for the track, excuse me, the funds from Gildersleeve be used to replace the track?
So from what I understand from the trustees this year, it certainly wouldn't come close to the 542,000 that we would need. You know, we might, you know, again, depending on where we land with this year, that might be something we could use to make a partial bound payment, but certainly doesn't, the Gildersleeve grant wouldn't be able to, you know, provide us that, that amount of money.
Thank you.
How much do we get a year for the Gildersleeve grant? And then what was it used for last year?
Question. So the Gildersleeve grant, the way I understand it is sensitive to market conditions. There is a base sum. And then however much the market yields is how much we, we, not just schools, but other county agencies can, can apply for. This year, I understand it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 80 to $90,000 that, that we could, could go and apply for. In years past, we've used it for some wonderful projects. We actually purchased our entire math program, which was very expensive with the Gildersleeve grant funds. We purchased, it's called Bridges. We've purchased large amounts of books to supplement our Reader's Workshop programming. So, you know, there's a whole bunch of projects that we've done. We purchased new servers for the high school, which was about $65,000 last year. So last year's grant went to update our servers in the schools. In years past, it's been used for all different types of hardware, technology, software, as well as curriculum and supplemental resources.
Thank you. And I got a question for Carl Johnson. Carl?
Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, Carl, the $50,000 system wide removal of the oil tanks. That's not a project our town workers could accomplish. It's got to go up to bid.
So right now, a part of the money is going to set the project up with a scope of work, not a lot of it. About $9,000. And we have three, I don't know if you're aware, we have three underground oil tanks that have lived their life. I did drain them last summer. I had them pumped out, so they are empty. One is at the Brownstone. One is at Gildersleeve, and one is at Valley View. We are going to, I, I don't know whether our Public Works Department could handle a job like that. I'm not even sure they have a machine big enough. We could always rent one. Not even sure, sure they have a machine big enough to pick an 8,000 gallon tank out of the ground. Where they are helping out is I, I talked to Bob Shea and asked him if out of our sand and gravel pit, we could get the material to backfill, backfill the holes after the tanks come out.
So there is a possibility that the Public Works Department can accomplish this task?
I think that question should be asked of Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Does Bob want to comment? Can you unmute Bob Shea?
It's environmental. Yep, environmental specialists handle that.
Yeah. Hi, guys. Hello, everybody. Yeah, we're not certified in environmental, especially tank removal. So I think you need the license to do that. We certainly will help with the mitigation of, as I spoke with Carl, you know, trying to use our materials here in town that are available to backfill those areas, which could save quite a bit of money and doing, you know, basically the groundwork after the fact. Certainly, we were able to cap that area once it's tested, which is part of that process. But I don't believe, number one, that we're licensed to do that. And number two, I absolutely do not have a machine that can pull a tank like that. The old excavator that's down the landfill right now, which is over 37 years old, it only moves about 10 feet to the pile and to the back. It doesn't have brakes and any parts that could repair that. So we're looking to, you know, replace that obviously in our leasing program. But it's a wheel based one, and it's, it's not the excavator that would be need to, needed to pull that size tank. So I think we're out of that business as a municipality, just due to licensing.
And, and Mike, the $9,000 is that's what it's covering. It's covering the scope of work. It's covering all the necessary testing that has to be done when the tank is removed to make sure that we don't have any environmental issues before we can close, close up the hole.
So by that argument, that number can increase tenfold if there is remediation problems.
Right. So that's why we're going to start at the Brownstone Intermediate School. I've discussed that with Tom. And we're going to see where we end up from there.
Well, I think there's, Mike, there's $30,000 or so in the capital fund that is also allocated. So while there's 50,000 in the budget, there's another 30,000 sitting there. So the total estimate, which may or may not be the number, is 80,000.
All righty. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Could Carl speak to the $50,000, Susan?
Yes.
That was for the, that was for the tennis courts, not for the track? The money that was set aside recently was 60,000.
Yeah, we did that. That was a couple of years ago that we had did that. I think that was actually like 65, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was your big money. The, we did about $8,000 worth of work in 15 on the track. The track has been very limited numbers of dollar values. The high value money that we moved was to tennis courts. That was with the redo. That was about a $60,000 project. It was in the past two years, and those are in good condition where the track, you know, was not that dollar value.
By putting about 60,000 into the track, we definitely, they're in very good condition right now.
The tennis courts, correct.
Can I ask Carl or Charles a question about the track?
Yes.
This may, may show my age here, but why is the track so expensive? What happened to, when I was in high school, we ran on these little cinders like, it seems like we have this fancy state of the art track that kind of has gone to hell in 10 years. So is there, I guess the question is, like, why did we put in the track that we have up there now? And is that the new standard for high school tracks?
I, I'll speak on that. That track was put in with the secondary school project. I think that track was complete in 2004. It was used. The project was not complete up here. I'm not certain that the kids were using it at that point because it was still a construction area, but it was paved and the rubber top was put on it, that sprayed on it. I think you'd be pretty hard pressed in today's world to find a cinder track anywhere. Maybe, maybe it would. It's just, I think they're, I would say obsolete. I think this has served us well. I think honestly, to own one of these is your life expectancy of these are going to be approximately 20 years. They do make them, Rick, now that are concrete with concrete tension rods underneath them. There really hasn't been any done around here. When they came to us, the price for that was over a million dollars. And Paul Bankston and I had discussed it years ago. We had met with a company. I think they had actually saw Tom Robinson at a, at an event, and Tom sent them our way. We looked at it and I kind of picked the guy's brain a little bit and asked, you know, so how many of those have you done in New England with this kind of weather? The answer I kind of got out of that was none. So I think that was more of a southern type thing. And I said to Paul, both of us kind of agreed that, oh God, we could put two tracks in for the price of that, not knowing what it would do. Yeah.
Did you say 15 years? Life expectancy?
On the track, Susan?
Yeah.
You asking me that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so yeah, I would have hoped we would have got more out of it than that, but that's what it appears, right? 2004, 2020, yeah, 15 years, 16 years we got. I know East Hampton's out right now to replace theirs. I don't know when it was put in. I think it's maybe a year or two older than ours.
So it's about $36,000 a year. Expensive.
It's expensive. So Carl, is there asphalt underneath that rubber?
Yes. So there's a hole. So honestly, underneath it, Rick, it is built basically like a road, gravel process, paved. I'm not sure how thick the pavement is, definitely two inches, maybe three. There's a drainage system that runs around the inner edge of it, which surrounds the soccer field. And that's how it's constructed.
So is the asphalt underlayer breaking down and cracking? Is that?
Yes. Okay, so you know, you've, you've seen it when we've had the patching done. I think Tom said the last time was 2015 or something where things were pulled up, there's cracks underneath. So you really, it's not something that we could just peel the rubber off of and then start filling cracks. I think you'd be wasting your money. I think you'd have to go in there and reclaim the asphalt there. First of all, the rubber would have to be stripped off and, and taken off, and then you would reclaim the asphalt, regrade it, and repave it. And then go back through the whole process again of spraying the rubber on it and spraying the track lines on it and all the numbers and that.
So once you peel off the existing rubber, it's, it needs to be discarded. You can't reuse it?
No. I don't know if there's a recycle. It's not a, it's not a product recycled on site. I know that. I don't know if that is sent to a specific place to recycle it again to be used on tracks or something. I don't know that. I know that it would go into dumpsters. The guy said it was just to remove the rubber was about $26,000 a couple of years ago.
Okay. Yeah, I know from dealing with parking lot repay. Maybe when, when they start to crack, you're almost better off just peeling it all up and grinding it up and starting over.
And I think that's where we're at.
Yeah, because if you just, yeah, if you just overlay those cracks come back.
Right. Within two years, you're going to have them back.
But um, well, I ran track in high school, and I don't know, I did well with just running on cinders and we survived. But I guess times have changed. All right. Thanks for your comments, Carl.
Okay.
Thanks, Carl.
Any other questions? Tom, do you want to move into the other items in capital? Or do you want to go to Public Works first and then go to Public Works Capital?
Oh, we can, we can go back to the Public Works and then go back to Capital after that, son.
So before we start, is there any more questions for Charles or the Board of Education? Because if there isn't, they may have some other assignments they need to complete before school tomorrow. So welcome to stay, of course, but I know it is late and I serious, seriously, I know you're here early in the morning. So please, please feel free to leave if, if that is what you need to do.
Susan, just one comment that Chris also asked about the COVID relief funds being used for the track. I would assume, given the fact that we don't have the full explanation of how the funds can be used, that you two would be premature to be able to speak to covering the track with any of that funds, right?
Yeah, I, I, you know, true, we're going to have to have a special session to talk about that as we learn more. And I'm hopeful Charles will know more, but it may be later. Mary, our meeting tonight, and Mary is a recently resigned from the Gildersleeve Fund, so she was their treasurer. And I asked her in the chat if she would comment on the Gildersleeve Fund, and she's agreed to give us a short synopsis. Mary?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I left the Gildersleeve Fund. My term expired in January of 2020. So the Gildersleeve Fund is a series of two funds, Gildersleeve and Wheeler Fund that were merged in the early 2000s, and money has been invested. The amount available to the Board of Education each year is 4% of the average value of the last 12 quarters. So right now, we're around $85,000 a year that's available, but it's very specific. So the funds that are there cannot be used for anything that the Board of Education or the town is required to provide by state statute. So they can't be used for a building. They can't be used for basic textbooks. They can't be used for desks and chairs. They can be used for new initiatives. So the math program, they had an existing math program in place, and that new math sequence of books was an enrichment program. So that was allowed, but they can't replace those books again. That was a one time thing. They introduced the new math program to the school system, and now it's up to the, the board to pay for it. Technology is different. So in 2000, I believe it was 15 or 16, there is an allowance for technology initiatives. And so that was how the Gildersleeve Wheeler Fund portioned, purchased a good portion of those Chromebooks to get that program started. It was a new technology initiative. But the technology piece does not have the same restrictions as the rest of the fund. So I think there's going to have to be a, whether it comes from the people that oversee the fund or it comes from an attorney, whether or not technology could be provided ongoing. And Charles and I had spoken about if they could provide a portion or a stipend every year for supporting those Chromebooks that were purchased. So if they go to a lease or there's a maintenance agreement, there may be a possibility that the Gildersleeve Wheeler Fund can be used for that. The only other thing I will add, and Charles has been great about making sure that the money gets used. I was the treasurer for four and a half years. And if the money is not used in the year that it's available, it becomes part of principal and it's locked and it cannot be given again. So if you have, we'll say $100,000 a year available, and you don't use that 100 in year X, the following year, you don't get 200,000. It becomes part of the principal that's invested, and so you can only use a percentage that's available to you in that year. So it's use it or lose it. And Charles and his predecessor were very good about making sure they came forward with projects that would represent the value of what was available in the fund every year, so those dollars wouldn't be lost. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mary, or maybe this is for Charles. About how many Chromebooks do we look to buy each year to keep the program going?
We have to unmute Charles.
I'm back. About 500. So, you know, generally with With, so we provide a Chromebook to every student in grades five through twelve. So we average about a hundred students per grade, that's how many we need, now we do have some that are already under warranty. Stephanie, remind me of the ones that we're looking to lease now. Nick, you probably have to unmute Stephanie too, I don't think it was all five hundred.
I believe it's five hundred Eric put in.
Yeah, that's right, so.
Cause it was.
Go ahead, Stephanie, I spoke.
No, I think it was five hundred total and that included to get everybody up to standard with warranty Chromebooks.
Right, so we need, you know, the eight hundred for the five through twelve under warranty and in good shape. But we're looking to do the five hundred now, which in addition to the ones we've purchased over the past couple of years. Have all of the ones for students in grades five to twelve under warranty and then we would be taking the ones that are out from under warranty. And turning those into classroom sets in pre K through four.
Okay, wait a minute, I didn't follow that, let me, let me rephrase. I guess every student gets a Chromebook, correct?
No, every student, now, every student has a Chromebook because of the pandemic. In a normal, every student in grade five to twelve, it's a Chromebook.
Okay, and how many Chromebooks is that?
So about. A hundred students in grade five to twelve, eight hundred Chromebooks.
All right, you're breaking up, so I'm just trying to get like five hundred Chromebooks, is it roughly five through twelve?
Yeah, so there's about a hundred students in each grade level, grades five through eight grade levels, so we need.
Okay.
Chromebooks that are under warranty and allocated to those.
Okay, so of those eight hundred, do we look to replace, how many do we look to replace each year?
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm trying to.
Right, so that's where the wind goes out of me a little. What we did historically back. When the Gildersley Grant helped us first round, we purchased them and then we tried to replace. So that each year we would purchase about two hundred Chromebooks. Now unfortunately, in some of the years, the budget times got tough. And we didn't always keep up with the replacement cycle. And what's happened now in the district is we kind of have a Frankenstein's monster collection of Chromebooks. That are all different years, different models and under different levels of warranty. So by doing this leasing program, we'll create a more consistent type and, you know, warranty basis for the Chromebooks.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to get a little more up to speed on this, so that's, that's why I was asking that question.
Yeah, keeping up with the Chromebooks has been a challenge over the past five years.
Okay.
And did I understand that there is a consideration that? If the schools decide it's wise to ask the Gildersley Fund to buy those every year? The replacement numbers, whether it's a hundred and fifty or it's two hundred, or am I misunderstanding that?
So. Interestingly, I ran by Mary in the hall the other day and she said, Charles, did you know that? The Gildersley Fund doesn't consider technology the. Seed money approach, that it could be, if you worked with them, something they would contribute to every year. Now, I'm still waiting to hear back from the Gildersley, I spoke with Stephanie Tatro tonight and. I'm waiting to hear back from Howard about whether that's the case, I think they're, they're meeting with the Gildersley Trust and are gonna let me know. About whether it could be a recurring expense or not, so I don't know that as of tonight, Mary, have you heard anything?
I have not, so after you spoke to Howard, he called me and I gave him the meeting date when the language was changed, which I. Think was maybe June of two thousand sixteen, so they did go back and they found the minutes. And the minutes are honestly vague, they don't speak to whether or not a technology expense can be recurring or if it's one time. The rest of the expenses are very clear that it's an enrichment program. And that enrichment is something that's done a single time for a single purpose to benefit as many students as possible. But that addition that they can pay for technology, it's not clear whether or not it's a single time expense or if it could be an ongoing. Amount of money and it could be that they could give you a stipend every year for the warranties. If there's not enough in the fund to pay to purchase the books, they may be able to help cover warranty expense.
Right, so that's what Howard was gonna look into and I haven't heard back from him yet, I just spoke with him about two weeks ago and I think he had to meet with the trustees and. Is there an attorney that they work with that we're gonna kind of?
There's an attorney and there's also an accountant that they work with that, that are both very good and that's all they do are these kind of private trusts, so.
It sounds like it's really up to the trustees as to how those rules are put forward.
Well, it's worth following up, I would say.
So I just have another question, so. The pre K. Through four. Today, in the days of COVID. Do all of those children? Have. A Chromebook?
Yes, as of today, every student in Portland has a Chromebook assigned to them. In fairness and depending on which class you spoke with, many of the Chromebooks that the students are using today are not under warranty and are. In constant need of, our tech department has been very busy repairing that, they're not the best. We have a lot of old devices that our students are using.
So once the new ones are bought, the five hundred are bought. The thought is they go where?
That, that, once that happens, every student in grade five through twelve will have a newer or new device that is under warranty. Will weed out the old Chromebooks and recycle them and then take the ones that are still in good shape. And turn them into classroom sets for pre K through four.
And what do you do with the ones that are with the pre K through four now?
They might end up being recycled, a lot of them are just old and ready to be retired. A lot of them are the ones that the Gildersley purchased five years ago.
And then going forward after the five hundred are purchased, Charles. And the others are recycled into the classrooms?
Correct.
What would the recycle look like, excuse me, what would the replenishment cycle look like?
So every four years, we would then get the additional, we would need more.
Five hundred?
Well, at some point, we're gonna need eight hundred, but we're gonna have a cycle set up for it.
I don't really understand it.
You're asking good questions, Susan, because that's what I was trying to get to.
There's, sorry, can I say? So there's about eight hundred because we did get a hundred from the state this year. And we also purchased about two hundred and fifty at the end of year last year, so when you add those to the five hundred, that's where you get to around the eight hundred, so they'll be about one year in. Does that make?
You're saying is that you got the eight hundred, you had about five hundred that from your purchase by Gildersley. So we're talking about thirteen hundred of these Chromebooks that are in play. Which is sent, is what you're talking about, right, I mean, this is what you have right now, right? I mean, you had to have one for every student. I mean, I remember this adventure in the spring, I mean, last year. When we had to figure out how the heck we're gonna get a Chromebook for every student in this, in the school system. I mean, that's kind of, it may not be as high now, but you're probably still talking about the same numbers you have to have in your rotation. Because you have to make sure if this happens again, we can't be grabbing like we did from. Machines that were sitting there for years or out of closets, you're gonna have to have functional. Chromebooks that can be used by every student in the school system, so I think what you're trying to say is how do we achieve a rotation?
Right, I don't understand the rotation part.
Well, I think, I think part of it, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I don't wanna. No, is, right, as I understand it, between the new ones that were recently bought and with the assistance of the state gives about three hundred right now. That are about a year old, right, the problem is we've got a whole bunch that were bought five years ago that are out of warranty. The five hundred that would be bought new would give us a cohort of about eight hundred that are basically new or within one year old. And so they're in good shape and within warranty. Our normal run in sunny day scenario when we're not in a pandemic time is we need about eight hundred. For grades five through twelve, right now, we sort of had a surge. Because of how also providing one to one for K through four. Those Chromebooks that are being used are actually the oldest of the old Chromebooks right now. So what would happen is the Chromebooks that are currently being used and replaced by the five hundred. The better of those would now be used K through four. And basically provide a better Chromebook for them to use in the classroom, right? Because they, once we get out of pandemic conditions, they won't be one to one and they won't be going home, there'll be classroom units that the kids can use while they're in school. And then the kids that are taking them home every day, the K through, the five through twelve will have effectively new or one year old in. In warranty Chromebooks is how I get it. And then the question becomes is that now we're gonna have this cohort of five hundred Chromebooks that are new. One hundred Chromebooks that are about a year old. And how are we gonna make sure we don't get into a situation where we don't, three years from now? Have this another need to spend three hundred thousand dollars to start replacing a large number of Chromebooks, right? We want to get into a more stately, whether we're planning for it with putting dollars away or something so that there's some planning. So that every year we have a way to make sure that we don't get hit with a three hundred thousand dollar bill.
Right, I guess my question is. What is that number? What is that rotation of those eight hundred, we're gonna have essentially eight hundred books, right, Jim? That will be within a year or two of age.
Yeah.
So.
I think we have to look at what the average sort of useful life of a Chromebook, I think the warranties right now are going, is it four years, Charles?
Yes.
It's four years, so if you, if you make the assumption that the average useful life of a Chromebook is with, you know, especially for the. One to one is within the, within that warranty period and you need to have roughly eight hundred in total, you'd probably want to be planning. About two hundred Chromebooks a year as a replacement cycle.
Right.
You know?
Nick, there's two things we can do here, if Nick has a way that I can share my screen. I could give you a snapshot, our director of curriculum now, Eric Martin, did a whole presentation for the board on just this topic, right? And I have his PowerPoint right in front of me right now, which shows you the current picture of what. Devices we're using in the district now and the comparison of cost purchase versus. Lease options, so I could either, you know, give you, give you that quick snapshot now or, you know, I'd be happy to have him, you know, I don't know if he's on now or get in touch with him to come another time. The only problem I would have is Nick would need to give me the ability to share my screen.
Yeah, you, you have the ability right now, you can share screens.
Susan, would you like me to take a second to just?
Yes, thank you.
I mean, cause you're not trying to replace eight hundred over time, you're trying to replace eleven hundred over time.
Right.
You gotta cover every student, you just gotta spread it out however you gotta spread it out.
Well, I don't, I don't think we have to cover eleven hundred because that, right, we're not covering the entire district, we're covering one to one grades five through twelve. And I think what's been happening is as we retire the older Chromebooks, those then get used as classroom Chromebooks, right? In K through, pre K through four.
Yes, I understand, what I'm saying is you're somehow rotating them down to the younger kids. But ultimately you still have to have a one to one relationship, it's just how you rotate.
So can everybody see what I've got up here now?
Yes.
All right, so this. It's titled current staff student one to one device inventory, we have fifteen hundred and eighty five devices out to students now. And this is, of course, in a pandemic, we needed since last March, we scrambled like crazy to make sure every student had a, had a device available to them. So the sort of, the first two lines that you see in red there. Those are, you know, the five hundred and ninety one N twenty twos and thirty three N twenty ones. Those are actually the, one of, some of the original Chromebooks purchased as part of the. Gildersley Award. Those are all out of warranty and those, I'm doing my math quickly in my head, you know, five hundred and twenty or so. Chromebooks are failing miserably, those need to go, those are our end of life after, you know, six to eight years of service. They are not, they're not working well, I mean, they're, they're, they're not under warranty when they break, they're. They're, they're just old and tired and they've served their time. What you see there in terms of the one hundred E, the one hundred second generation, the HP, the three hundred E and then these Chrome tablets. Those were all purchased in different years as part of a replacement cycle that we started or purchased with. Some federal money that we received as part of the state's initiative to make sure districts had the. Technology infrastructure to maintain hybrid or remote learning, so that's where we are today, that's the snapshot of the picture. And clearly, the N twenty one, N twenty two Chromebooks, those are the ones that have to go, right, I mean, they, they, they're done, they are ready to be recycled. So what Eric did, it's a pretty comprehensive PowerPoint, I'm not gonna go through it all. All with you, but you know, here's our suggested reallocation plan, right? Where Eric and the tech team has taken a look at these and said, clearly the N twenty one and twenty two. Those devices that are currently in use, they're done, they need to go. And then you sort of see, that's what I described as the Frankenstein's monster of all of these different make and model of Chromebooks. All with different warranties that we still have in place. Where you see the three hundred E and the Chrome tablets and, you know, those are still in good shape, right? Those are still very serviceable, under warranty devices that are, are serving our purpose as well. So you can start to see where things start to fade out and this is kind of our plan and our thinking. Ahead about how we start to replace these and make sure that. Our students in grade five through twelve all have a high functioning device that is under warranty, that is taken home with them every day. But as we come out of the pandemic, in pre K through four, students won't be issued a one to one device. But what we'll do is we'll start reallocating the ones that are still in pretty good shape and creating classroom sets of them. Does that make sense to everybody so far?
But don't children need to take them home, Charles, even the little ones?
No, not, not in pre K, you know, at some point, you know, the research says, and I'm, I'm very conscious of. Screens, we really gotta be careful about the amount of screen time our pre K, K one, two students are having. And I just, you know, I don't support a one to one device with students going home at the very earliest grades. Certainly for our older students, it makes all the sense in the world, but as we come out of the pandemic, we're not gonna be a one to one device. District for pre K through four, but classroom sets of Chromebooks, some, you know. Reasonable amount of screen time in the classroom is what I think the research and best practices are in terms of, you know. Developmentally appropriate screen time.
In the event, so I understand what you're saying, what you're saying is basically, I don't need that one to one to younger ages, because that's not how we want to educate them. Okay, so now we have another pandemic, I mean, those kindergarten first and second right now have devices, right?
Correct.
Because we had no choice, so if we have another pandemic, we're back in the same scenario, right? We gotta worry about making sure there's a, granted, they don't have to be the state of the art, the best ones, I'm just saying, if this were to happen again. Because, you know, you know the scramble that we went through last March, so I'm just trying to understand how we don't go into that same scramble.
Yeah, last March, I was literally in classrooms with the tech team with wire cutters un. Clipping zip ties and breaking apart all of the classroom carts of Chromebooks. And then literally driving around town handing them out to students or having people come pick them up. We definitely scrambled, we did it very quickly and efficiently, and I've got to say, I was pretty impressed with the work of the tech team. Making sure that every student had a phone book or a device by the end of March. We were blessed that our students in grades five through twelve already had them. But we did have a lot of work to do for our pre K through four students to get them into some online. to get them into some online learning and instruction that was happening. Rob, give me a clip, I know you saw a lot of that work that we did.
I mean, maybe if you have something, you know, that's one or two years out of warranty, it might be acceptable. I don't think eight, eight year Chromebooks are, if that's our cycle, that somehow we're gonna think we're gonna say, we're gonna give first and second graders an eight year old Chromebook in another pandemic, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to understand that part.
Yeah, and Rob, that, that's where we are. I mean, you see the first two, you know, in some, we have students now who are issued eight year old N21, we have 30 three students who have these old Chromebooks. They, they, they work, but they crash a lot, you know, they're, they're not great. And, and they're, I'm glad we're all back in person because this frame was frustrating in terms of keeping these things working.
So for the 300,000, there's approximately 500 new Chromebooks that will be bought. And is the replacement cycle perhaps gonna be 150 next year?
Here's where, yeah, so here's where, where you see that there will be cycles, right? At, at some point, you know, looking out, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna have to, you know, you know, be looking at leasing more. But because we're in this sort of, you know, again, I think, you know, I don't wanna, I won't do justice to Eric's PowerPoint here, but he lays out very clearly for us a, a five year plan that is going to keep us in good shape with devices that are under warranty. And then he does this sort of benefits and negatives of owning or leasing. But we, yes, there, there is gonna come a point where we would, we'd need to lease more devices, but it wouldn't be until, you know, after the current lease expires. And you see the, the difference in cost between leasing and buying.
And I see 1,000 devices to be bought at 181,000. Why are we look, why am I looking at that?
Yeah, I got, I, I just pulled this up real quick as, as we started.
Is that what we'll get to? We'll get to in '25, '26, 108, 1,000 devices that we'll have to buy?
Yeah, at, down the road, all of our, I mean, you see them here, right? We have some devices that are, are, are currently under four years of warranty. Four years from now, you know, they're, they're gonna be in the red here. So, yeah, I mean, of course, you know, we have to be mindful of the fact that five years in technology is a lifetime and five years from now, instead of Chromebooks, we might be talking to you about the hologram machines that we need to get students, right? I mean, you know, certainly, technology is changing all the time. Think about where, how far we've come in the last five or 10 years. But, you know, for the next four years, the leasing creates a stable supply. And based on what you see here in terms of the ones that are already under warranty with, you know, four year, 40 month warranty, it, it gives us, gives our students, especially in five through 12, access to a reliable device.
Are the devices about 500 or 600 each?
Oh gosh, it's more than just the, it comes with the warranty, the
Yeah.
lessons and all of the things you see here.
I think that's what Tom had told me previously. I, I'd like to study this more just because I'm interested and try to understand it a little better. And I think if we get more information from the Gildersley Fund, it may assist the Board of Education going forward to have a stable funding source for these devices. And I, I would, I would like to see us purchasing them on an ongoing basis, but to purchase 1,000 in one year is, is really difficult. And if there's another cycle that I could understand a little better, I'm not gonna do it tonight. I've got enough for tonight. But maybe another time I'll, I'll look at it a little more.
Yeah, and I, and that's kind of where I was thinking too, getting at is that we've got them and we have kind of this oddity, but even if we're not buying, we have to kind of be planning and try to normalize that cost year over year.
Right.
So it's not creating this, you know, the pig and the python scenario that we're running into now.
Well, we want the stable funding stream, Charles, so that the schools have what they need on an ongoing basis. And if we can avoid the spikes in expenditure, it's certainly better because there's gonna be so many other things that our schools need as well. So thank you for your patience with my questions, I appreciate it very much.
My pleasure.
All right, Tom, I think we're gonna move on to you, if that's okay? And Bob Shay.
Okay.
So we're gonna switch gears to Public Works. And can you indicate what page?
Yeah, page 57. Just on that, on that lease topic for a second. I mean, if you go into a, if you go in like year three and you start putting money in, that's a way to do it as well, like a 75 to 100,000 dollar amount. And they start buying in the year three at that, but then again, any way to slice it, you're gonna need 75 to about 100, depending on how the cost is. The cost went up very, very high last year on Chromebooks when the shortage occurred, when all the supplies were unavailable and the costs remain high. They don't, they don't go back to what they used to be. So what you used to get for 50,000, you're getting for 75,000. And if time goes on, you'll probably get it for 100,000. So at some point, you know, you're gonna have this four years, Eric's been telling us that it's gonna, you know, get you that four year period. But if you're gonna, you need a lease after that, and if you don't, year three, you probably gotta start buying, you know, an allotment and putting that money aside religiously to continue to buy, and you still may have to lease somewhere in the middle, at least would give you, you know, another option. I mean, you, you don't really want to do year two or one or two because you're still within the, you're well within the warranty term on all the other devices. So as well as you want to reap a benefit of, of doing that lease. It gets you a couple of years of it, but I mean, that's, that's a one other way to do it if you don't go in a lease, if you have to do another mechanism. All right, going back to page 57. Thank you all, Board of Ed guys for coming in. Now we're going to Public Works. So on page 57, we're at the Public Works Director Budget. And this is made up of two full-time employees. And it also has the hazardous waste in here. Hazardous waste fees have gone up. Just there were the change in who the CROG bid this out to, as well as there was different hazardous waste days and different fees associated. And, and it's gonna be closer, you know, to that, that 11,000 number that we have budgeted. So that's, more or less, that's just the increase in salaries is the only change in this budget. Page 59 is the highway budget, has the increase is related, it's contractual. There's no changes other than contractual changes here. Under the tree removal, there was just some monies cut just to lower the global budget. There is always a need for removal and, and grinding at, at all types of levels, but that was just a number that was reduced.
The other thing I want to call the board's attention to is the left side of your notebook where we have put all of the items that Public Works has done last year. And, you know, we filled the new position, certainly did the chip ceiling, completed the salt shed improvements, completed new sidewalk installations on several, several streets, as well as the connectivity grant on Main Street. Bob and his crew and others helped with Maple Road and High Street, the reconstruction of those, drainage improvements on Great Hill Pond, as well as the mowing and, and conducting all of the cutting throughout the town and the airline trail. I just think it's important, we don't always stop and look at the products that are produced by our departments. And it's critical to see how much work is being done for the dollars that you are investing. There's other, many other things that we've been doing that are ongoing, as well as some of the, the paving and the repaving and the maintenance of our buildings and the routine of the maintenance of many of these items. So thank you, Bob. I think in, in terms of management, we're getting a lot done, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt, Tom.
Storm drain cleaning, we anticipate a $5,000 drop there due to, I think it's more toward to the salt program that the, the Public Works has instituted. We do not have, as Susan said, we do not have gas and diesel locked as of yet. The prices currently are still higher than the amounts that we had for this year. So we're continuing to watch that, but we'll, you know, we'll, we'll wanna, you know, we'll continue to monitor. No other changes in the highway fund. Vehicle maintenance has a mechanic. You, is, you can see there was a change in staffing there so that the, there was a little savings in payroll with the new, those people that are working on, on the change of the steps. And really, that was the changes in that budget. The town engineer budget, that was kept flat. That's another area that we continue to monitor. And there's many, many requirements that are out there that could cause it to go over budget. So, you know, that, that is monitored throughout the year and, and hopefully, some of the items can be allocated to projects when they are, and they are allocated to projects when they are available. So that there's no increase in this proposed budget, although there's potential for needed expenses. Street lighting is a slight increase there. We're seeing an increase in the distribution of distribution charges in the current year. We also have, the current contract expires. So that's another area that we'll have to look in renewing the contract and, and going through that process. We utilize CCM Electric Consortium to do, to do those.
And also the LED lights have, there's less usage. While the distribution cost is going up, the usage is typically less than it had been before, the LED lights.
Page 67, which is the grounds budget. The grounds had put in some various requests, it's just paving more, Route 17 Park and just other areas. We, the, some of those items were not necessarily, were not funded. What it was funded was the employees that are based on the contractual amounts, a part-time employee for seasonal work. The, the overtime in this budget does track their snow overtime. There was allocation issue in '20. Some of that time was charged to the snow budget, so that'll be, you'll, you'll see it be more tracking toward the, the budget that is there now. The other line items were more or less kept the same, there was a slight increase in ground supplies. And we'll, you know, the grounds department will have to continue to monitor that and to see, you know, once they have a full, full year of making, you know, running the park and running the area. I know they're trying to save in some of the other park areas that maybe they don't have to maintain. So there's, needs to be a review of that.
Well, I sent letters to the owners of Tilcon Tomaso Field saying that we will no longer be using those fields, that field, and also sent a letter to the YMCA, so we will not be using the soccer fields at Phillips Ingersoll. And I think it's important to note that the employees that are in this budget are in the town side. And then there, the supervisor, his general wage is covered by the Board of Education. This is a consolidated department in that this crew with the supervisor take care of all the grounds in the town, not just general town government, but also the schools. So you don't see the salary for the director, Nate, strike cars in this budget, that the town provides to him for doing the supervision of our employees. So I, I just wanted to point that out. They do cover a lot of ground. They do a great job.
Okay, page 69 is the building maintenance staff. There was a new employee hired. Kind of worked to supervise the completing of Fire Company Two roof. Did some library renovation paintings and helped with some of the renovation work that was done, maintain and sanitize all those buildings during the COVID cycle. Provides PPE, completed the installation, oversight of LED lighting at town buildings, Town Hall, Company One, Company Two. Made some other, other improvements. Get the, this department has the three personnel in it. Service contract work is more, is HVAC, it's test control, elevators, things of that nature. It has the phones systems for all the town. Town General Fund runs through there, all the cell phone for, for the towns.
And I'll point out that while, while we talked last year about trying to reduce overhead, some of the work that Bob did and getting Eversource to come in and, and make some improvements to our lighting is helping to reduce the overhead. And, and going forward, we hope to see even more, more improvements in that area. I know the schools are doing the same thing. They're looking at trying to improve HVAC and, and types of work that we can reduce the overhead, that helps. So great job in building maintenance as well. Our buildings are, I think they're in good shape. Bob, do you have any kind of the shape of the buildings?
No, I think overall, you know, we're doing what we can with the budget that we have. There are some concerns moving forward, you know, for projects such as roofs. And one of those would be the Town Hall, we're starting to see it, it get to its age. And we're starting to notice that we're, you know, missing a few shingles, so we might have to work on that. And I've been in close contact with Tom and, you know, watching that. But other than that, I think a lot of the improvements in general that we're making to HVAC, hopefully will reduce some of our costs moving forward because those seem to be climbing every day. You know, just like the Board of Ed, HVAC is the, the hardest struggle for us. Our heating and air conditioning in our buildings, they're used so much. And the expense is high for repairs. So as we fund projects to bring new technology into those areas, hopefully that'll reduce our costs moving forward.
Okay, page 71 is the snow budget.
Good night, see you later, thank you so much.
Made a concerted effort to try to continually increase the amount that's listed in the overtime as in most years, with '20 being the exception of being a very light winter. We generally exceed this budget by a large, large number. In '19, we were 30, almost $30,000, a little bit over $30,000 above the, the overtime line. So that's what you see there for the $5,000 increase.
And we're back to that normal number this year, we're about 25, big, big winter, which I think is pretty good considering. But as you know, we can't predict our winters and when it snows. And when it snows on Sunday, that hurts.
Yeah, can you get those storms moved off the weekends?
That'd be nice. How about moved offshore? Even, even better.
The next budget is page 113. So we're trying to, we're trying to base this off of what our projected expenditures are. And then we try to base the revenue back in to the revenue based on the expenditures.
Talking about the sewer department, right, Tom?
That is correct.
Are we on sewer?
Yes. So we'll go to page 114. 114 has the payroll, which is half of the billing clerk, and then it's three employees. Then the related, the related benefits for those employees are follow. The service contracts, which is the disposal and then also the cleaning of the TVing of the lines. The manabasset amounts go, go there as well as HVAC control. So there's a increase in the service contract line for, for disposals.
Are there any questions, by the way? I forgot to ask. Okay. You're not shy, right? Everybody speaks up if Nick lets you.
So the, the, one of the main things is the the principal that there had been a reduction last year in the budget and then this year the notes that were outstanding were paid off in, in fiscal year 21. So there is no outstanding debt left in the sewer usage fund. So we took the funds from the principal, put it into the, sorry, but the amounts from the principal and interest and tried to put it into the capital so that you don't lose that data fact to try to accomplish projects that are, that are required. So that's what we, we did there. So you see about a 1.35 global increase to that budget. And therefore the related changes and increase to the revenue structure.
Anything you want to comment on sewer, Bob? Anything we want to tell the selectmen about? I, I think things have been going very well. I know that a lot of work is being done, still needs to be done, but.
And we're about 50% complete on our capital project for the primary pumps and the sludge tanks. Where we were a little behind because of COVID, of course, trying to get supplies in, especially the pumps from Canada. Miscellaneous equipment, but we're on target now to hopefully have that finished. It's a very important project. We did lose one of our primary pumps during this. So we're really working on one. But we should have one installed in the next week or so and be able to run. God forbid if we have an issue with the other one. And we'll hopefully have the new secondary pump installed and finish the tanks now that the, the weather is getting better because there's some painting and stuff that still needs to be completed, which is outdoor work. So we're moving forward. Those projects are critical. The plant is over 20 years old now and we're starting to see some you know, owners of that plant start to fail and need to be replaced. So the capital increase is a benefit and we're benefiting from that. As Tom said, that debt moving away so we can use it towards another good project, hopefully in the next year or two. Other than that, you know, we did, in all our budgets, including these budgets, we did take a little bit of a hit in overtime. We're still in good shape this year. I hope we're keeping it, but we had to do a lot of extra stuff for COVID, including our storm. Which impacted all our divisions in that little, in that line item as well. So if you're looking at our budget and where we, we stand as we move forward for the year, some of those numbers are directly related to those issues that we had, not only with the storm in August, but just making arrangements for COVID. Things that we were dealing with on the sewer side, additional rags and clogging pumps and things like that on weekends that we had to take care of. So that's about it.
And I want to point out that all of our staff worked through the COVID crisis in terms of being as safe as possible, but these are functions that need to be done and we employees came to work every day and operated very, very well with COVID safety. And I want to thank them again. I think it's very important to be recognized by the Board of Selectmen that they are performing essential work and doing it well.
On page 116, we try to put, you know, institute the various adjustments that were approved by the, the various, the rate changes. So we, we tried to do that for the meter charges as well as you see an increase in sale of public utilities and that's directly related to the increase for the parks. We think that the money, there'll be, you know, a substantial amount of funding would be for the watering of that, of that park and the usage there. Obviously you'll, you'll see that, that increase noted. Again, we tried to, we worked off of the expenses and then tried to work the, the revenue numbers based off the expense with trying to keep the numbers as close as, as we can there. When we go to 117, you have the other half of the billing agent and then there's two employees. I know that the water department is, was interested in adding a third employee. But with, with the cost of the water and you know, with everything else that was needed, that the number didn't play into the, in, in this year. The remainder of those items there show the various benefit costs. Contractual, you see the increase is a $37,000 increase for water. That's our best estimate at this point. That that's a, you know, it's a heavy hitter number when you, when you have that. The remainder of the month numbers were kept reasonably, reasonably close within. There was just a few increases in the various commodity lines. And the, and then the clean water notes, there was a reduction in one of the notes had fallen off. So now it's just the high street project and the entertain projects that we did was a bunch of years now back, but we ran those projects. The other projects had been paid off. So in this scenario, due to the, the increases in this, in this budget and the revenues, we didn't do as much into the capital fund as we would have liked to. But we were, we, there was $205,000 of projects at the time that were noted. I will know that when you go to the capital fund, there was a, it says 215,000. So we'll need to reduce one of the items that was listed on the capital fund. So when I get to the, advise of that, we're going to cut the, we're going to move the replace fire hydrants to 22, 23. With that being said, there was one project, I believe, that, that will be listed there that that Bob has gotten some estimates from his engineer. And that's for, we have to do our inspection of the, of the dam. And with during that review, the estimates are coming up slightly. I guess more than slightly, but higher than we have had money set aside in the capital plan. So Bob, did you want to touch upon the information?
Yes, we have our required dam inspection that we, we do every three years. And we had some work done, I believe in 2017. And there was money left over from that project in capital. So we held that there knowing that that was a good benchmark in the event that we needed to do more work. Well, our inspection, although showed the dam is in good shape. There are some repairs that are recommended and one of those is one of the seal or the gaps. It's a seal gap on the spillway. Actually, some of that was repaired back in 17, but I think, you know, in particular, this particular part of the dam off the spillway gets a tremendous amount of work when we have a lot of rain, which we've had. So it deteriorates to the point where it needs to be done again. Certain, certain portion of that needs to be done and you know, working on a dam, there's an awful lot of engineering that's required to go through your Army Corps of Engineers and all your permitting to be able to do that work. So there's engineering that needs to be done. The bid spec needs to go out and the work that has to be completed could be expensive as well. Those estimates came in at about 50,000. We apparently have about 37,000 of that, which we're happy to have. So we're going to have to address that $13,000 gap. And, you know, when we get to capital, I'd like to see that funded rather than cutting what's really not there. On the water side, we're, the water budget is difficult. I don't know if I'll ever figure it out. We're doing our best. I seem to be, I mean, I don't have much manpower to really do anything but emergencies and read meters so that we can get our, you know, our billing done. We're struggling a little bit with that, but we're doing better. And it's just, it's difficult. You know, we staff the water department with our other departments during emergencies, which we have for years. It's nothing different, but it makes it difficult. Especially during winter weather when we don't have that staff available. We have emergencies where we have to actually hire contractors to come in and help. Happened a few times this year, unfortunately. So your staff is two for a water department. That's big, you know, as far as what we're servicing. So it's difficult. We were looking for a half a person trying to make that move this year to get a half a person for, you know, somewhere in December, January. But the numbers just aren't simply because, you know, water cost is expensive, usage is where it is. And we're doing our best with what we have. Really, we're just maintaining. I'd like to see some ability to staff our department to be able to do things that we really can't do now. It's just difficult. You know, you have your, your two staffs, they rotate weekends. So they really have to work every other weekend. So that plays a big part on their lives and their availability. They're testing water Saturdays and Sundays every day of the week. We have to do rounds and then never mind all the emergency calls that go out through the week. So even one additional person in water frees that up, gives another person on the ground to do repairs and work while someone else is reading meters. You have 23 or four weeks a year that that one other person is reading meters and they're doing nothing else. And then we have to pull them off from the reading meters to do emergency work, which last week has four days, four days in a row of not reading because we needed that individual to work with the team on emergencies that we had. So as you could see, there's no depth to spread out there. So we were looking to do that, something for you to consider. We've been talking about it for years. I just don't know, you know, how we get there, but the need is there. It really is there. And if we were to fill a position, I was hoping that that position can also be used in the winter to plow when we're not doing emergencies or whatever and can help as well. So, you know, there's, there's ways to cross over as departments always help each other. And that would be, I think the water department would be able to do that as well if we were able to staff that. But it's a challenge. As you see, when you get to capital, you can't do much with little couple hundred thousand dollars in a water system. You, you can barely open the road to put a piece of pipe in. So, you know, we're moving forward. We're making improvements, big projects that we've done. The steep grant's going to help us. We're trying to move forward with our Brownstone Avenue project. Knock on wood, we'll get that done this year. And we just need to continue to do that because the more improvements we make will be better later if we continue to try to find ways to run our system and find water. Without the infrastructure, the water doesn't matter. So we have to build that as we're finding water. So we need to continue to do that. So thank you, Tom.
Well, you know, and I, I just want to add that I pulled the number from 2016. What, what we paid to, for our water was $466,990. You'll see in your budget here, what we're predicting is 857. So from 2016 to 2022, the numbers that you spend for water is tremendous. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's a 75% increase over the last four years or something in that order. It's just, it's just, you can't keep up with it and do what Bob is explaining needs to be done. We have to get a different way of supplying water. I don't pretend to know the answer, but if you're going to run your own water system, run your own sewer system. And I think it's been shown in many instances in Connecticut that you're better off when you're responsible for your own utilities. Because otherwise you get choked. And it's something that this board has to continually look at, which we are. And the $250,000 grant from the state is helping us in terms of planning. So we'll be hiring, I don't think that's, is that, that's not in this budget, right, Tom? We didn't put that in capital. That's outside the budget. It is in the budget. So I not it, did we put it in capital?
We did not.
So the $250,000 is not in your budget, but it's dollars that we are going to use to get a consultant to help plan the future for the system. And it's critical. We're in the process now of getting a proposal from Jacobson Engineering to do the RFQ to go out to hire the consultant to analyze our situation and give us good guidance as we move ahead. Before we leave Public Works, I need to, to ask the selectmen for a motion. So are you through with Public Works, Tom?
No, but you can do it every once. That's fine. I mean, a few more.
How many more departments are you going to cover?
We have town aid road, we have building maintenance and we have resource recovery.
Okay, let's do that. And then we'll go to the motion.
Then we have to go back to capital.
Yes.
Can I ask one question before we leave this page though?
Yes.
With regards to, you know, Bob, to your point about overtime and everything. So the overtime showing on this water page, is that the overtime that your two employees are bringing up for the work they're trying to do? Or where does the public works overtime get figured in?
So that's for those two employees. Most of that overtime consists of their rounds on the weekends. Which is a two hour minimum on Saturday and a two hour minimum on Sunday. And they rotate every weekend. So that's in there. That's almost like a fixed cost. And that includes overtime as well for emergencies. So that's an estimate depending on, you know, if we have a good year or a bad year. The majority of that money is kind of fixed to those rounds that they do. We have to be there every weekend, every day of the week. The money, the overtime that the other divisions would come in for related to water goes to their budget.
So do we have that split out to, obviously they have overtime because of non-water issues. Do we have the specific number that ties to water issues in Public Works overtime?
Uh, I, I'd have to break all that out for you, but it's, it's, it's pretty high. Because you're looking at two individuals that come in for overtime for an emergency and then there's three others that come in from highway on an average to do a water main break. So you're looking at three employees at time and a half or double time on the highway side and then your two employees for water. So that's the way the budgets, you know, Tom and I have talked about this many times. I think I've talked to you all about it too. You know, that's the way the budget's set up. And I think a lot of it has to do with the cost. Is it a true picture of the cost of water? No. Because there's, there's a lot of labor there that comes from other departments to assist. So I think your overtime budget would be higher by about five or seven or maybe $8,000 if it all, if all your employees were charged into water that worked on water related emergencies.
Can't do it.
You're right.
You got, you got two people in a water department. They can't handle a water main break and this budget can't handle it. Period.
Well, that's the thing. So we've kept it in those other. And then when you have, with that said, when you have a storm in highway and you use all your overtime budget up to try to mitigate that storm, now we're just going in a deficit on those budgets because we're now charging against water emergencies and other emergencies, not related to water. That might be highway for trees. Down and things. We just keep it a little way. Usually the overtime budget is pretty good and it's accounted for properly in highway to kind of cover the use, you know, those overtime hours for water or any other division really that needs it. But the overtime for the guys, depending on where they're working, usually stays in their budget, which is I have a different opinion on water, just because it's a revenue source budget that, you know, maybe when we work those jobs, we should accurately show those hours, but we can't. That's, we're feeding, we're feeding off other budgets to make it happen.
To have a water system in this size town to service your schools, your municipalities or buildings to supply the businesses. to service your schools, your municipalities, or buildings to supply the businesses, the industrial zone, it need to have a water system. And it's very expensive. And the Public Works Department, general government assists with making sure that the maintenance of that division is happening. And they, and again, I'm going to repeat myself, they do a wonderful job. There is a cost associated with the town this size, being able to have its own water system, its own sewer system. And there's, there's definitely a cost to it, but it is a definite advantage to Portland for the size town that we are, that we have a public water and sewer departments. If we didn't, you'd be looking at other problems. So we have to be grateful that we have these divisions and we have to be vigilant as we are toward making sure that we're taking care of them and planning for them in the future. There was a question in, in terms of the fact that I said the water cost went up. Far as I know, and I'm going to look to Bob to correct me, it's not a sizable increase in the volume of water. The Public Works strives to have a hundred and forty-six million dollars. Excuse me, gallons, is that right, Bob, from MDC? So the volume of water is not tremendous. When there's a drought and we can't run the well, there may be some fluctuations. But in general, those dollars that I'm talking about that increased by those hundreds of thousands of dollars is for the cost of approximately the same amount of water.
Yeah, so, right, we're, we have to take, we have a, a minimum that we have to take from MDC, which we do each year. This year's drought season hurt us a little bit. We, we ended up needing fifteen million more gallons of water to get through based on usage. You know, people were using it. So we're trying to offset that as best we can with our well. We've talked about this a lot. We play the game between, you know, the, the fiscal year, calendar year with MDC and our fiscal year and how we play with usage and then really try to run our well as hard as we can to make up for that. This is a tough year. You know, we're doing well since we came out of the drought, well with our well to try to now make up for that increase in usage last year. You know, it wasn't just the drought. Everybody was home. So I've always said, you used to flush your boss's toilet. You were flushing yours every day. So I mean, you know, it just makes a difference. People were home. They were doing things. They were outside. And there was a drought and, you know, it just added up. So last year was tough. And we're trying to, I don't know where we'll be this year. Hopefully we'll be okay. But you know, we're, we're doing our best with our well and trying to produce as much water with the well that we have to try to offset that with the end of our budget. And then we'll be back up trying to, as of July, trying to make sure we use our hundred and forty-six million gallons ones that were contracted to the end of December with MDC. So it's, it's really a faucet game and it's difficult.
And, and the, and the work Bob's been doing to make that balance, you know, that's, that's good work because if we can keep it that hundred and forty-six million gallons, that's important. That's the minimum required for our take-or-pay contract with MDC. And what's happened with that and what's, you know, the component driving this is we've seen in the few, last few years, in the, in the first, you know, twenty years of the contract, we saw rates going up four percent a year. In the last few years, it's been eleven percent increase, thirteen percent increase. You know, just these types of increases. I think when you compound them out, it's over forty-two percent in increases in the water costs just from MDC. And we don't have, we don't have an alternative because we're locked in for another few years. So that's why there's, the effort has been, you know, right now, unfortunately, we have the two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant is to, to really make sure that we have an alternate water source online by the time we get to the end of this contract. That is the goal. And that's what we're working on. And that's going to, that's going to help the other numbers too, get the water cost down. And that cascades to starting to free up some revenue to do, you know, capital work and things of that nature that are, that right now that, that funding is being chewed up by the very high MDC class.
Thank you. I think we'll go to, I guess, Town Aid Road, which is page one twenty-two.
Page one twenty-two and one twenty-three. So that's a grant that's funded by the state. So thankfully, the state has continued to fund this at a similar level as in the prior year. So we're excited to get that money. Page one, which is the Resource Recovery Fund. Try to keep the revenues and expenses as, as similar as possible here. We did, it seems like we were not hitting our forty-five gallon bag to residents number that we used to as time goes on with the change and the, the people that go to this, the usage that has dropped. So we, we did try to lower that estimate to get closer to what we have been receiving. And we will, we'll have to watch metal. Metal has not been too high lately. So hopefully that will pick back up again. And we did add this year's three thousand dollars in for brush pickup for revenue for brush drop-off. So you'll see that in this budget. So that's a, we didn't anticipate really any other, many other increases at this point. We'll have to see how some of the tipping fees come through and some of the other various fees. And we might have to re-assess that and come with it, you know, if, if our cost of disposal goes up tremendously, then we'll have to come up with a method to recoup that cost. We go into page one twenty-eight and one twenty-nine, and that's your expenditures. There are two employees in this budget. And and that's what is in that, what's in that budget there with their related. We see the service contracts is a line item where we do have the grinding. It seems like that, you know, it's usually around a nine to ten thousand dollar item apiece. And, and so that number is continually on the rise as more, more product comes in. We try to leave the remainder of these items pretty, pretty close as we had a global net point two-one percent decrease. Try to, try to keep it as close as we could to the review there. Building maintenance, this is a fund that we, the town allocates forty-one thousand to both the town and the board. The year where revenue was good, it'd be great to increase this. There's a drastic need on both sides for continual building maintenance on the town and the board. So, but this, this, these monies are definitely appreciated and helpful to both the town and the board about to complete, you know, some, some decent sized projects and, and, and some of the heavier maintenance that would really, really hurt the operating budgets. The capital fund, which is on page one thirty-five, the capital plan.
I don't want to go to cap, can I? I wanted to talk to the selectmen about the proposed sale of town-owned property at six thirty-four Main Street. What we need to do, as you know, that's the old police department and it's the old Fire Company Two building. And I looked in the record to see if we had body of Board of Selectmen asked that we send this to an, to planning and zoning for their review. And I had sent a resolution, a draft resolution. What I'm really asking for is that you reiterate the fact that you want us to move forward with the sale of that building. So it was built in nineteen, did someone say something? Whereas the town of Portland owns the property located at six thirty-four Main Street in the Gildersleeve section of town containing a structure built in nineteen thirty-five. By estimation, zero point three seven acres. Zone R-ten designated in the assessor's files, map sixty-six lot one. And the building once housed Firehouse Company Two, then the Police Department, and most recently a fire museum. However, this building has been vacant since twenty fifteen. And whereas pursuant to Town Charter, Section five oh three, letter D, a special town meeting shall be held to consider whether there'll be a proposed sale of any town-owned real estate appraisal for more than a, more than ten thousand dollars. And whereas in accordance with Connecticut general statutes, the proposed sale of town-owned property is subject to a public hearing. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portland Board of Selectmen hereby requests the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is also required by state law, to conduct what's called an eight dash twenty-four referral to review and make recommendation on the sale of town-owned property at six thirty-four Main Street. So the process by which we can sell this building requires that this go to their review and their approval. In addition, there'll need to be a public hearing once there is a potential sale agreement. And then once that has occurred, there'll need to be a special town meeting in order to sell the building and be able and allow the first selectman to go ahead and, and sign off on the sale. So I'm asking for your motion to approve this resolution so that we can proceed and have planning and zoning review this under eight dash twenty-four. So is there a motion to that effect?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution dated March twenty-three, twenty twenty-one titled Proposed Sale of Town Property, six thirty-four Main Street.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Rick Sharpe. Thank you. Any discussion? Lou, did you have any discussion on the topic?
No.
Bob? Bob has discussion on the topic. I'll allow it. I'll allow it.
Just, just really quickly, we have to just make sure that we all are fully aware that we keep an awful lot of ground supplies in that building and have since it's been vacated by the seller savers. So although the building's not heated and it doesn't have the utilities that serve it, it is a storage facility. We're going to have to make arrangements for what we currently store there to be stored somewhere else where we don't really have right now. But that's down to be talked about in the future. But they, they do have an awful lot of product in that building that they, they go to each and every day. Seed and miscellaneous things that they use in the fields that have been moved there for safekeeping, dry atmosphere, and out of our area of concern based on permitting and stuff that's down at the highway garage.
Now, I anticipate a sale this fiscal year. It's possible that it could go into next fiscal year. And depending on other revenue and expenditures this year, decide when you need to have that revenue come in, which merits further discussion later. Any other thoughts or questions? At a minimum, we have to have this done with planning and zoning. They have to review it.
Yeah. Well, didn't, don't, didn't we put this in last year's budget that we were?
It's in this year's. It's in the current twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. The year that I, that we are all living in now, not twenty twenty-two. It's in this budget.
Right. It's, it's in the budget we approved last April, May, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's what I was asking.
Yes.
So.
You are correct.
Okay.
My, my, my statement was for your consideration, just in terms of management of revenues and expenditures. All in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll go back to you, Tom.
Yeah, Tom, I muted you earlier. You can unmute, but I muted you because there's a lot of feedback.
Thanks, Nick. All right, page one thirty-five. The general fund at this point is only, is putting in only a global amount of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which is made up of the fifty thousand dollars from the system-wide oil tank replacement and fifty, fifty-six thousand for town-wide referrals, including the backup replacement appliance for, that's, we had, when we had our, we had a breach there. We, we were, we went through and had a review with our legal and, and a cybersecurity expert. And one of our things that we need to do was improve our backup solution. And we, we had contracted on a four-year term with an appliance. And that term will expire, I believe, in November-ish. So we need to go and update those appliances and, and then and, and put a new appliance in with it, with a four-year term on that. So that's how we normally do that. We, we buy the appliance and the license comes with it. And then it would be a hundred eighty-four thousand for the dash, the body and dash cams, the storage. Hundred and forty-four is put in, a total of two fourteen is in the capital plan, of which we anticipated at least thirty thousand coming from the grant. Thirty percent is of the grant. We don't know what the total allowable amount would be. So you want to make sure you have enough funding in place to do the project. So we were, you know, basing it off of a hundred thousand dollars of allowable costs. Giving you the thirty thousand dollars, but you know, the need for other, for other costs. And then if we were to get further reimbursement, it would be a positive, a positive in that scenario. The, there's through, there's in the, in the budget, there are two, three different grants this year. There's the LoSiP grant, which is we've allocated twenty-five field improvements. Thirty-seven thousand two twenty is for building maintenance for carpeting in the municipal buildings. There's definitely a need in the town hall building to have improvements made at the carpeting. There's potential trip hazard situations as the carpeting is pulling up. The, there's a connectivity grant for five hundred and twenty-five thousand seven seventy-five. This is where we had put the last connectivity grant. So we're kind of putting it in the same location. Where, looks like we'll, we have a match on the engineering that we will likely to do that match utilizing some of the municipal grand aid funds that we get that's recorded in Fund Eighty-Four. Susan had contacted some individuals at the state and they had said that that was unallowable usage. And once we get that cleared up and get the proposal from Jacobson, Susan thinks he's going to reach back out to just reaffirm that. So that'll, that'll be good. And then the, hopefully the anticipated grant for the body and dash cams of thirty thousand dollars. The other component to the plan was one point five million dollars in capital lease. That would have the three hundred thousand dollars for the Chromebooks. That's for approximately five hundred or so Chromebooks for about a four-year term. The lease is about, is a seven-year term. We'll try to pay the Chromebooks back over the four-year basis with the seven years and all the other components. The first year of the lease will be, for the all other equipment, other than Chromebooks, will be interest-only payment in the first year. The Chromebooks would be a principal and interest payment, which would be in the debt fund, component of the town side general fund. Also, there's a need for the fire replaced apparatus, Tainture Number Six. That's around a three hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred dollar item. There is a need for a ground trailer. That's a fifty-six hundred dollar item. There is a need for two Ventrack attachments. Those will also There is a need for two Ventrack attachments. Those will also assist and help the one of them will definitely help some of the board of ed property as well as the town property. The walk behind mower that use on both properties. And then the purchase of the Ford F three fifty, that's for the looks like that would probably be for the supervisor. So that would also be something that would help the town and the board was showing it through the grounds division. Police, police equipment, we're trying to equip two cruisers with all their required sound lighting packages and sound systems and all that, as well as some laptop solutions. And then with the excavator for the highway garage, they need to replace the excavator and they're also gonna try to obtain a grapple with that, which will hopefully allow to improve it when they do various storm cleanups. The highway large dump truck and plows. Almost every time when we try to do a lease program, you have to try to get a dump truck with a plow in there. It just it's a good good sense for the the replacement of that. There's such a high dollar ticket. And they do take a bit of time to to build and and have ready. So that's in there. And then the other there the roll off for the resource recovery, the roll off container. So the roll off truck needs to be replaced. It's it's quite dated with a lot of miles on it. It's it also carries sludge for the sewer. So it's kind of a dual purpose truck. But it is utilized to 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 do the roll off for the the trash hauling. So they're looking to do, they need definitely need a container as the containers are getting older. So kind of put it all together with a container and a truck. And then we have to finance this. So we use our financial advisors and our bond counsel. So we include that within it. So that should have a capital lease of one point five million dollars. The plan itself has numerous items from numerous departments that requested many, many things that did not meet the that they weren't able to be funded this year. There are plenty of great projects that are in the plan and items that could could save money, could be enhancement, could be good to the service to the public. But it's just, you know, how much money can be funded in the in the project. So those items, you know, if you know, review, you know, if you can review the line items and if you have any questions for the directors, you can ask those for other other projects. Also, I think the capital commission is starting their group again. And, you know, hopefully for next budget cycle, there will be some input for for from that group as well. So page, the page one thirty seven breaks down. I know Dr. Britton had said that he didn't put in some of the other schools. I left the capital plan more or less what it was last year. I know that if you look at the board of ads budget, they have some of the capital improvements. But sometimes when you have grants and grant activity, they require like, I know again, Losip's an example. If it's not in the capital plan, it's hard to get approved. So we like to try to have this much reasonable in the capital plan that we can include. And then if if there are, if there is a grant or a reason that requires that, it shows it. So we've we we left those items that were in there. They they do all seem like valuable items that are all needed to be to be purchased as well. So that, if you look at the board of ads budget, it looks a little bit different than ours on that side. As you see on page one thirty eight, you see the fire apparatus. Page one thirty nine, the grounds will have the items that we've listed out. And then parks and rec has the twenty five thousand, police has the ninety and the two fourteen. Building maintenance has the carpeting, which would be Losip denoted by the L. The highway has the excavator with the grapple, the large dump truck, the grant for the sidewalk. We didn't put the non-grant in because we're gonna probably try to utilize that money from the municipal grant aid and Fund eighty four for the match. And then the roll off for the resource recovery, the sewer plant, it breaks down to thirty five, three hundred fifty seven thousand three hundred as a rate sewer. Bob works with Ray Pierce on the various projects that are required to be accomplished. So they have the three hundred thousand going into the plant and system improvements where that's where we get a lot of our system improvements done. There's some station improvements that are needed for three for twenty thousand. Your pump replacement for twenty thousand, a variable frequency drive for eight thousand and manhole improvements for ninety three hundred. The townwide again has a fifty six thousand for the computers, the peripherals and the backup. And then the closing costs. Water department has facility upgrades for ten thousand. Water tank improvements for a hundred and forty five thousand is an estimate. And main line valves, thirty thousand and Reed of twenty. Now, this is where I noted before that there was that extra ten thousand dollars. So you would, you know, the which should occur is then the replacement of fire hydrants should go to zero. And then the ten thousand should be moved to the next year and show thirty thousand. So that would be a two hundred and five thousand there. And I would also change on page one thirty six. You can see the change on that. That would change line item zero zero five oh two. Now, in number eight nine one three oh, this is also where the reservoir dam repairs are in the capital plan that was approved a few years ago when we did the last plan. And it was thirty seven thousand around thirty
Thirty seven eight, Tom.
Thirty seven eight. Thank you, Bob. It was in, that was in this remaining from there. And there's a probably a need like Bob was saying, there's a need between a thirteen to fifteen thousand dollar item there. So you know, what I probably consider. Unfortunately, at this point, you probably want to consider an addition of fifteen thousand dollars for because it seems limits that we're receiving from the engineer and they're usually pretty good at their estimate. But that's probably the number you're gonna need. You're not gonna get it done. It's a thirty seven number and you gotta get it done. So probably would add a line item in there and add the fifteen thousand and kind of hope that we get it done at that. With that being said, you have to increase the capital and Fund Three. Also, in Fund Three, you would probably increase the revenue source of metered sales by fifteen thousand. Time to make that work, but that's something you guys can y'all can consider. When you do deliberations, but it sounds like from what Bob is saying, that there's a need for that. You gotta, you know, that's definitely one of those ones. You gotta do the repairs to the dam. You can't. Our our insurance company requires Bob to provide that inspection. And then, you know, any of those type of repairs, they usually want to follow up that we've accomplished what you know, what they've said we have to do for the for the insurance of that matter. Anybody have any questions on those components? I think we went through everything, all the areas this cycle. So Susan, did you have anything else or?
I have a question for Tom.
Go ahead, Rick.
So on this one point five million capital lease, um what's the interest rate and what's the amortizer? Like how? What? How are we gonna pay it back, I guess?
Yeah, so we went over that. We did page one oh four a little bit. So, you know, we don't, we don't, obviously, we don't know the interest rate. We don't have, you know, we were estimating an interest rate that we're basing our amortization on. You know, so we don't have that because we'd have to go out and get the pricing officially. But what we did was, like we said, we we in the first year, fiscal year twenty two, we're we're paying principal and interest for the Chromebooks and interest only for everything else. So that's where you see the seventy three thousand five eighty for principal and the sixteen thousand eight seventy five for interest. Then the second year we will probably, so that would be around, you know, the way we kind of thought to schedule that would be around Mayish. You would make that payment. And then we would budget for the next year. We probably would turn around and try to make the payment around September first so that we don't have such a high interest. We don't wait another whole year on interest, but the money is set aside in your budget. And then those years, you'd be paying consolidated payment of two hundred eighty five thousand four hundred. And then you would pay that for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four and twenty five. And then fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven and twenty eight, you'd be around two hundred and eight thousand four fifty. And if fiscal year twenty three, the pay on the two thousand twelve refunding decreases from the nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, it drops to the four hundred and seventy thousand. So there's a drop of four ninety. So that's why in fiscal year twenty three, you can absorb the payment and the interest and the principal of the lease. And then if you have fiscal year twenty two as a fifth year of the current lease, fiscal year twenty three as the sixth year. And then fiscal year twenty four, the lease payment of around the two seventy two drops off. Does that answer that question for you, Rick?
Well, sort of. I I kind of was following you from page on one oh four. And then you kind of lost me, but um.
What part do you need to know about?
No, I was just trying to, I'm I was trying to take notes and 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 follow you. I get the two hundred eighty five thousand four hundred the first three years and then it goes to two hundred and eight four fifty.
Yeah, that drops off because the Chromebooks should be paid by that, right? For the last three years, the Chromebooks are paid. So years one, two, three and four, you're paying the Chromebooks. Year five, six and seven, you're not paying the Chromebooks. So you're gonna you're gonna have a schedule. It's a one, it's a one term lease with the two schedules on it. So the first schedule would be, there's a schedule, there's a lease schedule of the, let's say, three hundred thousand dollars of Chromebooks with the interest rate. And then and there's the one point two hundred dollars of equipment and financing costs for the other for the seven years with the first year of that being an interest only.
Alright, so it's a total of seven years of.
Yeah, the big, the big equipment it is, definitely. Because there was, there's really nothing on there that's not a seven year life, even with the cruisers. I mean, they're you're usually getting seven years out of those. They're getting SUVs, so.
And then these Chromebooks, I guess, we're figuring six hundred dollars per Chromebook?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I I know. I I mean, it fluctuates on based on whatever Chromebook you're buying. You know what I mean? So, you know, you if you, you know, whatever their spec is, is their spec, you know, for certain children, you know, certain age children, they use this spec. For other ages, they use this spec. Sometimes they're touchscreen, sometimes they're not. So I mean, they're like, they tell you that they're they're spec and they go and get them. I mean, you know, I guess if you do the math on it, you're probably saying it's six hundred, right?
Well, I I was just doing three hundred thousand and five hundred Chromebooks. It just seemed kind of high to me. I mean, it's probably not really.
Isn't it like five hundred and fifty Chromebooks? And I think it was like about four eighty. You threw up the numbers, the individual numbers, and I thought it added up in like the four eighty five range per la for for Chromebook.
It's a minimal, as you're you're getting at least five, you should be getting at least five hundred at the current spec at the current price. Whether that being said, if that changes, you know what I mean? You should get more than five hundred, some some dollar amount more. And then, and then from that standpoint, but I mean, you're within the ballpark number. You gotta, you got, you have the Chromebook, they have the four year warranty, which is the all in warranty. And then you generally have the 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 carryall case. So I mean, it's all the whole.
So you're paying that warranty price is probably in the price of.
Oh, it's one hundred percent in the price, yeah.
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 In the list. Yeah, it was in the list that he displayed.
Yeah, I mean, we're buying, I mean, the way the the way that the the board had presented that was like they did at least through the company. We're doing, we're trying to incorporate into our into our capital lease program. So I should hopefully get the value, the weighted value of the bigger amount, right? Because we're gonna, we're gonna lease one point five million in total. So hopefully, you know, I'm using, you know, I have to use a conservative estimate on the interest rate in case something changes with the interest factor. So we can do it. But I mean, hopefully you get a strong interest rate for this and it's a, you know, you know, it'll be a good deal for this time. And then, you know, they gotta make a determination of how they're gonna go forward. I mean, the initial plan always had been we would fund it, you know, they would fund it somehow with either we have to use a capital and the board of select would have to give the money through capital and put it as a technology lineup. You saw that a few times in the budget back. There was a time where you were putting fifty thousand dollars into technology. That was kind of the place. Then the other part was they were gonna put it into their operating budget. But then when things get cut, that was, you know, leads to be one of the main things that gets cut, which is understandable. So they just need to, you know, you know, figure, you know, they had some time. This will give them the board of ads some time to determine if they can do it another way or other way or otherwise, you know, this the the capital lease of Chromebooks for, you know, a long time. So
Yeah.
Hopefully they can come up with, you know, another solution. But, you know, because right now, I mean, you know, knock on wood, the interest rates are are good. They're now strong, you know, or low. You know, you gotta pay an interest if you're, you know, a four or five percent interest on stuff like that. You don't like to pay that because you rather just put it in the device. But right now, I mean, I think there's, you know, with my understanding of talking with the the director of technology and curriculum, there's a need and the need is to replace it now. And you know, you're not gonna come up with that much funding. You know, you're gonna, even if you were to use other sources, you're not gonna come up with that much money of what they need right now. You were, you know, if you were using a used Giller sleeve, you wouldn't, you would not, you wouldn't come up to that much. That was a over a period of time approval. And that was a staggered. It was, I think they did some grades, they did some more grades. So that's why they're not all falling off. You know, it's just that at this point, the ones that are the original purchase are well over, I think it's well over five years at this point. So they're probably into their sixth year or so. So that's why those are, you know, and and the software has improved tremendously. The the programs are so much stronger and quicker. So the, you know, whatever you're running, the operating system that you're running on that solution is 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 far integrated now on the older devices. And that's why there's a need for the new device.
So, Rick.
Well, I don't dispute the need, nor the the way you're, how you're trying to to fund it. I just would like to know that there's kind of a plan for four years from now when the ones we're gonna buy are starting to become obsolete. I know that's not your call per se. And I know that's not your call per se, but that's.
I mean, the plan is a hard solution for, I mean, the plan is they can come back and ask the board selectmen to put money into the capital fund. That's part of the plan. The plan would be if they put money in their operating budget, which then they have an ability to cut. Or the plan would be that they do capital lease structures. And those are the, those are the items that, you know, that have to be worked out. But I mean, that's where they're, so at some point, it's gotta be, it will, it has to be funded and it just has to determine what it is. But at this point, you know, I mean, I think we've conceded that, you know, they need to have the devices and they need to have them soon. You know, unless they're somehow, if they get a grant, and if somehow they're gonna get a grant at some point down the road. You know, that's an alternative as well, but those are harder. It's hard to come by with a uh, equipment grant. You don't get those very often.
Yeah.
But I do think, Rick, you know, these recurring costs do need to be allocated. So per student, there is a cost, of course, for education. And one of those costs now, which has been happening, but as Tom said, we've been getting them through grants and other, other mechanisms. There's a cost per student, per year for a Chromebook. What is it?
Right.
I don't really know, but there's gotta be a cost, just like we talked about the track. If you're gonna figure fifteen years, you gotta figure thirty-six thousand dollars a year for that track. That's a major, major in, investment. And it's something that I don't know that we always look at in that way, but it's.
Well, right, that's.
It's like the playscapes. You remember, you know?
Yeah.
Our kids, we did playscapes, then we had to replace. Then we said, well, we should be putting a lot of money every year. Well, do we? I don't know. But, you know, so, some of the books in particular, and we all see children using them. They're critical. I mean, that's part of the way we are.
That's kind of replacing some of the, the class books. So I just.
It's critical.
Maybe we should be budgeting so much every year going forward that, you know, and it'd be a lot easier if we were, say, maybe buying a hundred new ones a year and just rotating them through rather than every four or five years, you know, we get hit with.
The main question that comes out is where do they come from? Where do you budget it from? Do you budget it in capital? Do you budget it in their operating budget? You know, that's the, the X factor. Because if it's in their operating budget, then if, if, if they need to cut, then they cut in that scenario because they still have to purchase textbooks. They still have to buy uh, software solutions that they run on. So that's the X factor. I think that's what it is, you know, that need to know where that's gonna come from, is it operating board of that or is it capital? Or, or somewhere else, but that's the X factor.
And then, Rick, is the technology gonna change?
Right.
Yeah, right.
And it probably will. And, and, and the way that it's delivered and the way that the system within the building is configured, is changing. And Tom and I talk about this all the time. Inside this building we're in, inside the school buildings, we're looking at doing some outdoor free wifi that the state is providing. This is a major revolution, as we know, in terms of how we operate our businesses, whether they're in offices or are they in your homes? The schools, are, are children learning from home? When, when they're got a snow day or they got vacation or they have to be home because of illness, they're gonna need these Chromebooks. I mean, I, 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 I appreciate saying that it's not ideal for the youngsters in their education, but as time goes on, there's a lot of things that we need to account for. So I think you're very astute to make these points. The other thing that I think is important to point out is that if we're gonna be looking at interest rates less than two percent over seven years, this board needs to contemplate whether they want to add more to the lease. Is it prudent to buy things this year? As opposed to future years when those interest costs are likely going to rise? And then you're in a situation where you have to pay cash or incur terrible expenses associated with interest. So we're in a good place and I think Tom's done a marvelous job in making sure that we utilize these lease programs, which is essentially paying it with a small interest rate over a period of time because you're making nothing in the bank. I mean, we have millions of dollars in the bank, but we're not making anything out of it. We're not allowed to, you can't invest it in, in any way, but very conservative. So you have the money in the bank, you're not making any money on it. But if you can borrow the money for a low amount of money, then you're, you are able to capitalize on that. So, you know, I, I don't certainly support reducing the capital investment that we're looking at this year. But I certainly understand people's ability to pay and all the things that we need. So you either leave it as it is, increase it. Trying to think about budgets as a clump of years as opposed to one year. You know, we budget one year, but we really should be budgeting five years. I mean, the capital plan tries to do that, but it doesn't look at operating costs as well. I mean, you're, you're looking at some years where we have to go up on the budget. Now the years where, as you know, we've had zero increase a couple of years ago and minimal increases. But depending on this, the, I guess the wave you're in, a little more to keep pace. And this is one of those years. And if we can utilize some of those dollars associated with the American Rescue Plan, it's, it helps to reduce that wave increase of, of expenditures. But how we do that, and I think it has to be a conversation with the Board of Education as well as general government. Because I think there's ways that we can help one another to flatten out that wave.
So, you know, regards to the, the Chromebooks, my point during that, this conversation really was, is along the same line, is how can we find a steady flow of capital every year? So you're not going crazy about these bumps. Unfortunately, what you have is they purchased five hundred at once. So now you created this big, it's not like they did them across time. So that's the challenge you have. But the idea that there's children using an eight-year-old Chromebook, I don't care what you say. There's no way that an eight-year-old device is gonna effectively work. I, I, I mean, I was in those discussions in the March. I mean, they were pulling them out of everywhere, out of closets, they hadn't been used. They had, you know, there were stretches where there were multiples, multiple ones that failed. I mean, they just have to have a strategy. So we're, if you, I, I agree. I don't, if you don't want to teach them that in that primary method for that age group, I understand that. But if you have another situation, situation like we're in, you have no choice.
Yeah.
Really, I was involved in the, just helping the purchase of those initial group of Chromebooks. And that was a new, was a very new technology. It was a new platform. It was new way they were doing business. And we did, you know, they did stagger and they purchased some for this group, then they staggered and purchased some for the next group. Then we, we, and if you recollect, you, there was a time during where they were putting in like fifty thousand dollars in the capital plan for a year or two, and then it got hard and they got cut from, you know, the various boards. So we, there wasn't allotment of money that was in capital and that's why some are still in warranty. Because maybe three years in, we bought maybe thirty-six thousand or so. I can't remember the exact number, but there was some amount of that fifty thousand that we purchased uh, an, another group of Chromebooks. And then, then they bought the next group, uh, they bought a bunch, they bought some last year with their operating funds. And then the state provided some as well. So, I mean, there was an attempt, but then as the, the, the first few years, it wasn't a need, right? Because you just bought them. And then the, the years where you were to buy the, initially, the monies did get cut from the operating budget. They were either in that or they were in capital. And whichever way that went, the years where they were in capital, it was cut from capital. And the years they were in operating, they were cut from operating. And that's where you're, I don't know, here we are.
And Rick, to the same point on the track, I've been engaged one way or another on Long Range Capital Pride for over ten years. Whether I was a selectman or going to them anyway. And for years, the discussion was the track, the track, the track. Well, now if you had started putting fifty thousand dollars in ten years ago, then you would have been, I mean, they were told, I think, when they built it, you should allocate money for future track concerns. They didn't. Again, same line. When things get tough, you cut the numbers. So they cut the numbers for track. They never, in fact, they never cut the numbers. It was always on the list, but it never made it to the final list. So when you sit there, you're going, okay, now it's fifty thousand times ten years and it's ten years. So it's the same scenario.
They're on a list. The, the list is huge.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't. The list, it comes up with a question that we can come up with, Susan and I are reviewing to put the list forward to you.
I'm talking this about the school. I'm not talking about where you ultimately landed on the list. I'm talking about with the school came forward, they always dropped it off their list, is what I'm talking about. I mean, I don't know how much discussion they had with you about it, but the school never, at the end of the day, the school did not bring forward, well, when we look at push comes to shove, this is the number we want to put forward. The, the, the track typically was not on that list.
I, I mean, I've seen it on the list. I mean, it's been.
I mean, it's on the list the last few years because it's the whole amount. The strategy had to be some sort of a putting more money for a while. You can't think you're just gonna throw, well, I don't know. That's just my.
Can I say something to that?
What was that?
Carl.
Oh.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just, just in what Ralph is saying, not to beat a dead horse with a track. The year that it was installed, it was the first one that we ever had like that. I asked the dog company who's no longer in business, what kind of money should we be budgeting, budgeting for care and upkeep? I was told fifty thousand dollars every five years. Fifty thousand dollars every five years. Which is a lot of money. That's a lot of money. I understand that. But that's what I was told. Because what that would do would get all the cracks repaired and get the thing re-sprayed with a rubber and the new lines and everything like that. Well, obviously they couldn't afford to do that. It's an expense to own something like that, as it is to own our parks, as it is to own all of our buildings and everything like that. It's an outrageous expense, but I guess we have to do it. I don't know. That's all I got to say about it.
Well, so it's basically, particularly it was fifty thousand for maintenance every five years. I don't know, Carl, would that have prolonged the life of the track?
I don't know. I don't know. It probably would have. I don't know if it would have become a thirty-year track. I don't think it would become a thirty-year track. I really don't believe that. I don't know what the answer is to it.
Yeah. Well, you're right. I mean, you have to maintain your stuff. Otherwise you just, it ends up, you know, just getting obsolete and all of a sudden you have a big bill on your hand to, you know, improve, improve it. And that's why businesses constantly remodel their stores, whatever, every five or ten years. And they, they keep so much aside for upgrades. And I guess we're gonna have to try to look at it that way going forward. But right now, we got a five hundred thousand dollar track. I guess it's gotta be rebuilt, right? Because we're not, we can't use it. We're not using it. What is, what does the school do for track and field now?
It, it also impacts, you know, their gym curriculum, which, which uses it. And, and if you take a look between the middle school and the high school, I believe the number one participated, you know, the sports that are most participated in our track and cross-country. So it is something that is used very heavily.
Yeah.
And you have to remember, we, we don't, it's just a small town.
Right.
We do a lot of things in this town. And while we have twelve to thirteen hundred children in the school, you know, a, a five hundred thousand dollar track is good, it's wonderful, but there is a cost to that. And we don't, we're not, we're not a rich town and we're not, um, we're doing well, but we do our best. And as Carl pointed out, there, there was other things that we had to spend the money on that fifth year than the fifty thousand. You know, I sent an email, honestly, I sent an email to Senator Needleman. I said, look, we need a track. Every year I look at the bond numbers that come out at the end of the, at the legislative session. People get splash pads, they get tracks, they get pavilions, they get all kinds of things. You gotta do some lobbying for our town and say, look, it's our turn to get one of these grants too. And there is a methodology toward doing a lot of these things within government. And I think you have to be on top of it and I'm doing my best to try to get those grants. Now, while it's difficult sometimes because it involves additional administrative expense, that's how you get these things done. So all of you should call Christie and call Norm and say, look, it's our turn. It's our turn to get a track. You know what? I saw this town got a whatever. Look it up. We deserve it just like every other town. And if you don't speak up for yourself, you're gonna have to take the cash out of your pocket. So you gotta be assertive and you gotta know your numbers and you gotta make sure, I think we deserve to get some help with this track. And I think that we should be asking. What are they gonna say? Yes? Well, that's good. They're gonna say, hmm, let me think about it. Okay, think about it. That's a big ticket for twelve hundred students. But we're doing a darn good job educating our youngsters as well as youngsters that come in from out of town. And we deserve that.
Well, isn't the track part of the, like, whole interscholastic sports program?
Sure. It's a, and it's, you know, a lot of the things that our, our schools do are regional efforts. So yes, the other children come here and they have the big, um, big, um, the track meets, the mega ones, the small ones, the practice ones. So yeah, we're all connected with this. And when you look at the state of Connecticut and the amount of money that they have spent and invested in education, remember, they built a lot of schools over the last several years. A lot of magnet schools, a lot of charter schools, as well as trying to help the city and town public education. So I, I don't mean to say that Connecticut isn't doing a good job. We are. Um, and we have to keep fighting for it in order to do the physical as well as emotional and mental education. So keep trying.
Well, and, and just not, not to, not to throw another thing into the fire, but of all the. Yeah, exactly. The Portland middle school track teams have more participants than any other sport.
Yes.
Uh, in Portland, we have close to seventy kids that participate, probably more signed up. That, that's like a herd of kids. That's a herd of middle school. That's a lot of kids. So. Uh, but anyway, so it's a lot of people participating and using that track.
And Mike, I think you'll attest that it's a lifelong sport in many ways. If people participate in track, they get used to physically walking or running or jumping or doing things that are, are probably gonna be some lifelong activities that they can mimic over time. So it's part of their education as much as going and using a Chromebook inside the building is being able to go outside and exercise.
Listen, if, if Rick is still running after starting on a cinder track, you know, what, twenty years ago when he was in high school, the kids with a good track will do it even more.
Yeah. So I just, before we leave that, that topic though. So high school kids just, they're not able to have track meets? Like, are they're not able to?
All the meets are away. There's no, there's no meet being held at, at our school, of course, but I don't know what the schedule is. I don't know, you know, what teams we're competing against yet. So I, I haven't seen that schedule. We just had a coaches meeting two days ago.
So how do, how do our kids practice or can they practice on the track even though it's not?
What, what Carl had said earlier, I'm not sure if he's still on, is that they're setting up, I guess, parts of the track that we could use, I guess. Yeah, so. And, and I know Isha was setting up a smaller one on the lower soccer field, I guess, a two hundred meter track. So. So there'll be something that the kids can run on temporarily and will be able to compete and use some of it. So, so we'll still be able to do some practicing there.
I see, okay.
I just do want you to understand, and I'm not trying to beat a dead horse with this, but the public uses this track an awful lot. Seven days a week, people from the public are up there on this thing constantly, running, walking. So it isn't just a school for thirteen hundred students.
Well, I'm glad you said that. I was actually gonna ask that question because I remember going up to that track when it was cinder and then when it was, the new track was made and walking up there and running and actually would go up there with my father and we'd walk around the track. But I didn't realize you, it, so it is open to the public then, that's.
It is. They try to limit that, Rick, that use during the day when school is in session, especially now with COVID. with COVID and the kids are out on mask breaks and they're out there walking. So they try to discourage that, but there is from before school starting to after school to evenings. It's nonstop, seven days a week. Okay. Enough for me on that, I guess, but.
All right, Carl, you need to tell us these things because we don't know them all. So thank you. Yeah, I use the track a lot. I go up there and use it. I went up to inspect it and see how it's doing and it's crumbling. A period, it's crumbling. It is. It, and Lou sees it every day. He lives right near there. It, it's a beautiful place. I mean.
I, I'll just have to reiterate what Carl just mentioned, uh, is that after school hours and every day on weekends and vacations. I mean, I, I'll be washing the dishes and I'm looking out at the track and I'll see maybe a dozen people every fifteen or twenty minutes uh, walking on that track. So I'm guessing that during a course of a weekend, there's probably a hundred to two hundred people walking on that track. And they're not, yeah, and some are high school kids and they're practicing as well, but a lot of them are just people like yourselves and me and uh, other people from the town that are using that track and uh, you know, there's, these tracks do not last forever and every high school, I think East Hampton is putting one in right now, every twenty years or so, or maybe fifteen to twenty years, they have to be replaced. The sad part about it is, is that a municipality has so many needs that you cannot afford all the things you need to do when you need to do them. It, it would be nice if we had an endowment that, uh, said, okay, here's, uh, we, we do have an endowment. We have the Gilder Sleep Fund, but if we had another one that had, you know, maybe, you know, uh, a hundred thousand dollars a year that you could use for different things, you might be able to build that up over time. You know, I, Susan mentioned, there are so many good things that are happening. It's good. There are so many things that need to be done. How do we make it happen? And then just like the Board of Education, they're coming in with a budget to, to educate our kids. Uh, and you know, years ago, the per pupil expenditure was probably about eight or nine thousand dollars. Today with the, the cost of living and technology, the expenditure I think is up to eighteen thousand dollars per kid uh, in the state of Connecticut. So how, how do you make that happen? Uh, you just can't have a zero percent increase in your taxes all the time. They have to go up.
Well, we could get into the whole discussion of property tax if you want to, but I don't think we have time tonight. And the allocation of resources throughout the state. And, and it plays a role.
Sure.
As you're on a ninety-one, because you have Route Nine, because you're on I eighty-four, you're gonna have a lot more potential for the kinds of economic development that really are redeeming and, and help your grand list. Do they share that with the suburbs that are on the other side of them? No. No. When there was a nuclear power plant in Waterford and they pay mill rates of less than twenty for decades, do they share that with uh, East Lime and the other, maybe they do. I don't know. It's, it's just not the way it's done in Connecticut.
Yeah.
And it's somewhat ridiculous. But through it all, we do very well and we have an awful lot of good things that we're, we're very, very grateful for. And I think that this board is doing a very good job along with our Board of Education and our, our leaders, our, our employees toward utilizing resources very, very well. So we'll continue and continue to look at whether, you know, the lease program is working, when do we, um, when do we plan for new bond indebtedness and, and how is that all fashioned? And it's something that, that Tom keeps a close eye on and, and I know this board does as well. So we'll, we'll continue to do that. And I'm sending my, my email to Norm and Christie right now. I'll copy you. How about that?
There you go.
Okay, what do we have next, Tom? I don't have to go home yet, do I?
It'd be nice.
You are.
Getting tired. I was nodding out about a half an hour ago and I came back to life.
Yeah, I caught you.
Yeah.
That's all I had for tonight.
Okay, now tomorrow night, um, I don't know if you wanna do this all again, um, or would you like to meet next Tuesday? I mean, I enjoy meeting with you, but I don't know that we need to go tomorrow. What do you, oh, what about Parks and Rec? Do we do Parks and Rec?
We start to do P and R.
Are we supposed to do Parks and Rec tonight?
It's on, yeah, it's on the agenda.
On the agenda. And I see Nate is here.
If we can get through it and back tomorrow.
And then, and then we don't have to go back tomorrow, right, Tom?
I'm pretty sure that I did it last time, but I guess I could do it again.
Let's do it again.
Yeah, didn't we do Parks and Rec?
Nate, do you have anything you wanna add to your information? Nate Foley, can you unmute Nate Foley?
Do you want me to do it real quick, Susan?
Yeah.
So we'll go through this quick and Nate, then you can add in after again.
Thank you, Tom.
So, you know,
Page please.
This is a page. So, uh, we, we, Nate increased his program rental fees and I think he, you know, spoke to you all um, at the last Board of Selectmen meeting to go over um, those increases, uh, you know, for uh, the pavilion and some of the local areas. And then, you know, I think he was also maybe hoping to maybe enact a you know, like an advertising where you put a sign up on the outfield fence. Um, so you, you know, there's some, there's some things there that he's working toward, but I think the first thing was to try to get the updated information for the pavilion um, and the other uh, topic that was on that, that list. And uh, so those were some of the areas that he was looking for to generate some additional fees. Um, like we said last time with the youth service, there's some possible changes in the uh, personnel there in youth service. And so the intent was to move the Kids Blast program over to the Park and Rec program. I know when I first got here, the Park and Rec program had that program. They kinda moved over to youth service for a few, for a bunch of years and now trying to uh, move it back over to Park and Rec. This year though, it was really that program, uh, due to the issues with COVID and the not ability to transport the students. Uh, the YMCA, I think, uh, handled those programs and ran them. We were kinda out of that business. Um, that's a, it's a pretty big business for the town of Portland's personnel and that had always generated a significant amount of revenue, um, somewhere between, um, you know, the seventy-five to a hundred thousand uh, based on uh, the activity there. So, um, with the fee structure that Mary and Nate have kinda worked out, we're trying to anticipate around a ninety-nine thousand dollar revenue stream um, from that. Hopefully, again, that would be as if we have the, the, the buses are able to bring the kids back to the biz and run that program and other, I guess, parents really enjoy it, that uh, you know, that kinda dedicated learning environment for the after school uh, care or pre-care, the, the program that it is. The uh, he, the, I estimated some increase in the adult fees, again, uh, that's a a kind of a hope and a prayer. I don't know, you know, if we're gonna be able to get to those points, but they're gonna try. Um, he's trying, uh, the majority of the, the program youth fees. And then also with, hopefully we can get the summer playground fees uh, back to a level that um, they, they once were. Summer camps were a hard, rough procedure, the COVID last year, so that was uh, hurt. So hopefully that those also can, can run and will be at the levels. Uh, road races, uh, I think that Nate was possibly anticipating doing an additional road race. Um, seems to go very well. People have a lot of, a lot of interest in that and uh, it generates some revenues. The transfer in um, went down due to this potential um, uh, bringing in of the revenue that used to go to the youth uh, service program. Let's say, you know, that's kinda contingent upon that. That's, uh, that program generated some uh, income there. Uh, well, you know, if it doesn't meet the levels, that's something that Nate will have to to review and watch during, during the year and uh, you know, collectively we'll have to look at that. Um, the payroll allocation on the budget, I uh, for last year when I put the budget together, I kinda put everybody into the one's payroll and I was supposed to allocate that out. Uh, and uh, so this year I put it back out and allocated it. And if you were to look at a report, I think I have it allocated out in the current year anyway. But in twenty twenty-two, it'll be allocated out between the, the two employees in there. And then uh, the temporary payroll. Uh, we've always called the people that work for the youth service temporary payroll. So that's where we would charge the people that work for Kids Blast. Uh, we charge them to the youth, to that. And then all the people that work for his teen programs would go into teen recreational um, in an effort to try to break those uh, costs out to show kind of the revenue to the expense. And then uh, obviously his, you know, some of his salary would be part of that mix as well as uh, Andy Deone's, um, that they would, you know, if there is a uh, if you see a plus there in that revenue, that's because some of their salary would have to be covered, obviously by the work they're doing to run those programs. Um, and then uh, we have the related uh, the benefits that changes based upon, you know, people get married, uh, have families, kids, things of that nature. So you, you know, that kinda fluctuates based on that. Um, the service contracts is mostly related to uh, his licensing for the software system that he has. We see an increase. We're lowering, we're, I don't know, we're kinda hedging the bat that we're not gonna achieve the twenty, the twenty-four thousand dollars in electric electricity that we budgeted this year. We're hoping that we're going into the twenty thousand, one fifty, but it's interesting until you really run the splash pad and you run that whole facility on Route Seventeen, whether or not you're gonna, you're gonna hit those numbers. So um, we're uh, we lowered our estimate from the twenty-four to the twenty thousand for electricity. Um, but in water and sewer, on the flip side, we went from the eighteen thousand to the thirty-three. That's around that fifteen thousand that we talked about in the water department where you see that um, that additional water usage uh, that we anticipated. And we did see actually more than that when we um, did some of the summer work, but there was a, the grounds department continued to adjust and tweak that uh, the amount of the water flow um, in the irrigation system and Bob worked with uh, with Nate uh, Strickars to try to get that dialed in and Nate uh, does a great job with that. The uh, equipment this year, uh, you'll see some, this year we, we did use that equipment expense. We had some with the dugout purchase, we had to have an outlay uh, when there was some damage to the dugout. Um, that one dugout in Nolan Field's gotta be rebuilt. Most of that'll be paid for by the uh, by insurance this year, but you know, there, there was some expenses there. So we'll uh, Nate tried to lower that by about a thousand dollars, but we've always had about a twelve thousand dollar number in there for equipment, equipment supply purchases. Uh, but he lowered that to eleven for this year. And then the programmatic um, supply, the programmatic activities, well, we kept uh, what was the same, the miscellaneous program, that would be expenses for the Kids Blast, I'm sorry, the, I'm sorry, the uh, activity funds, Kids Blast is for the activity funds uh, for the Kids Blast program. That one is uh, interesting. Um, the previous, we, we hopefully will have some items left over from the youth service program that we have currently running, that we had running up into this point that I'll be able to um, be used. Uh, Nate's gonna have to, you know, check his own um, system on that with this year when he runs the program. That number could, may have to fluctuate up based upon the needs of the program and, and what they change. The road race uh, has, uh, we left it about the twenty-five hundred. That maybe should have, could have gone up because if we're gonna run another race, we probably need to spend more. So that one, we may be a little aggressive on our budgeting there, but uh, so globally it shows an increase of expense of twenty-five percent and that's uh, with the increase in the uh, youth, the Kids Blast program coming over. Parks and Rec on its capital side, they have numerous capital uh, activities that they love to do. Uh, there's numerous things there that, there's numerous programs that um, Sean and Nate uh, could uh, could go over with you on those items and uh, but we did put together the low sip, we allocated a normal amount that we allocated to low sip there. Um, and that's all that we're able to uh, come up with for uh, parks. There's really no, Parks and Rec, you really can't lease any, any of those improvements. You're not allowed to really lease that activity. Nate, did you have anything to add?
How's everybody doing tonight? Tom, thank you for covering everything so thoroughly. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of chime in and, you know, say we, obviously we all had a, a tough year with COVID, you know, especially with the lack of availability to offer in-person programs, which, you know, just really hurt us on and off throughout the entire year. Um, in turn ended up saving us expenses because we weren't paying as many instructors, we weren't paying staff throughout the summer and we really didn't need to purchase as much equipment on that regular, um, you know, season to season programming cycle that we would normally offer. However, you know, I think as Tom mentioned as well, we're, we're kind of transitioning into this year with a lot of uncertainties. So looking at like the electricity and the water, especially at the new park, when everything really ramps up for this first spring season, moving into summer, moving into fall, and it's going to take, you know, between Bob, Nate, Strickars and myself really figuring out what our, our best strategy is here in terms of water usage, electricity usage and how we're able to really dial that in to make sure that we're saving as much as we can. Once we get a better understanding of how much these facilities are being used, how much water and electricity is being used. So that's definitely going to be a learning experience for all of us, I think. And as Tom also mentioned, definitely the transition of Parks and Rec taking back over the Kids Blast program is going to be a huge source of revenue for us coming in. I know he mentioned supplies and equipment as well. So we're really hoping that we're able to kind of reuse a lot of the same supplies we utilize for our summer quest program during, um, with grades K through nine as well as any specific equipment Mary has left over over from what she planned to use for Kids Blast program before it didn't run. So with that said, we're hoping to go into the program very smoothly, already having a lot of those necessary supplies and equipment together and kind of have that additional source of funding at our disposal as needed, once the program does really kick off. Our other expectation with the increased revenue for both youth and adult programs, I feel pretty strongly just through conversations I've had, you know, with the public as well as different rec departments around Connecticut, we're already seeing a large ramp up in participation, especially as some of these restrictions are lessening. So I feel pretty strongly that we'll be able to make those new estimated revenues that we have put down. I think we're going to see a large increase in both youth, adult, and we will still be attempting to offer virtual programs for families who don't feel comfortable yet enough to actually go out and participate in person. Um, and the one last thing I just wanted to touch base on was regarding the discussion last week about the move forward with the fee proposal structure for the pavilion rentals. And that was kind of the initial. And that was kind of the initial phase of how we'd like to continue progressing with the field rental fees as well as what Tom mentioned, a a banner sponsorship program that we would like to work with local businesses as well as anyone interested really to utilize some of the fence space at both Rose Hill, potentially the Newportland recreational complex down the road and kind of just zone in, whether it be season, seasonally based or annually and local business support, either Portland Soccer Club, Portland Little League, or just promote their business in general by being showcased along our fence lines at these facilities that are going to have so many people coming into them.
And I'm, I'm gonna plug once again, I think, something I talked about along with Lou. And that is if we look at the American Rescue money and we look at making some improvements um in recreation, that is an allowable cost, I believe. I've seen some other towns utilizing recreation. But if we can put some solar panels on that, on that pavilion at our park and pay for that electricity, at least a portion of it, that'd be a good thing. I mean, it is a grant. It is something that would be reinvesting in our recreational complex. The other thing is, you know, within broadband and within providing uh better reception for our residents that live uh east of 17, taking a look at putting in a communications tower at Company 3, which is something that we've talked about. And investing that money to bring back to us revenue by leasing that to private companies. And they pay between $2,500 and $4,000 a month, depending on the size of their array and, and the duration of those arrays. So those are some things that we should think about. I think tonight's been a great meeting, talking about not just our present needs, but how can we accommodate those needs going forward? And think about funding revenues that will come into our town to help mitigate those costs that inevitably increase.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? Tonight? Um, I think it's been very helpful to me. I've learned a lot by going through the budget, even though Tom and I have been through it quite a bit already, along with other staff. But learning from our Board of Education, as well as learning from each of you tonight, has been very helpful. Now, perhaps you'd like to have a motion to adjourn?
Before, before we do that, I have one more question. Last question, I swear. So, so Ralph, when is, when is the splash pad officially being turned on?
So as soon as it's safe to run water and not worrying about frozen pipes, they will run the water and they will figure out what final tweaks they have to make to the system. And, and hopefully we, we will be able to do an official opening. Uh, I would think that it's hopefully by uh sometime in May that will be done with and we can open it up and have some hoopla when we do it.
I'm all, all in favor of hoopla.
One positive, Mike, is that um the warranty starts this year, right, Ralph? Even though it's been there a year, it doesn't start until it's actually operational.
Yeah, yeah, it's, we haven't run it yet, so.
I'm, I'm only going if Tom goes there and gives him the splash pad.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Just for a second?
Second.
Third.
Rick, thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
It's uh 10:37. Thank you. Great job, everybody. Have a good evening.
All right, good night.